All right. Good evening, everybody, council and the public. Today is Tuesday, May 24th, 2022, City Council Meeting. Looks like we have a quorum. So let's get this meeting started. Margaret, could you get roll call, please?
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Here.
Councilmember Rary?
Here.
And let the record reflect that Vice Mayor Rodriguez and Mayor Bryant are absent.
Thank you, Margaret. Before we get into the Pledge of Allegiance, we have a unique situation. This is the first time that it's happened since I've been here. We have a mayor and a vice mayor that will not be able to chair a city council meeting. So I get the pleasure of of inviting the council members to have a discussion. And the first rule of business is I do need the council members to select or to nominate someone to chair this meeting, temporarily chairing just for this meeting. And so I'll need a nomination and a second. And with that, I'll turn it over to council for discussion.
I would just like to make the motion to have councilperson Karen Rary chair the meeting tonight.
And that is a very, very easy second.
Okay, I've got a first.
We would have had to argue which one of us could nominate Karen for this.
I have a first and a second. Is there any more discussion?
No.
Okay, awesome. So roll call, go down, councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Rary.
Hi.
Okay, with that, Chair and Councilmember Rary, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. At this time, if we could do the Pledge of Allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And moving on to public comments, at this time, the public is permitted to address the city council on books. Margaret, do you do that part? You do that part.
I can do that part, absolutely. At this time, the public is permitted to address the city council on items that are not on the agenda, items listed under presentation, informational reports are on the consent calendar, requests for future agenda items, new requests. Please save your comments for any other items that are on the agenda for that part of the meeting when you'll have the opportunity to provide them. I received no written public comments that were submitted for this item. If you wish to speak under public comment, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature, and I'll call your name if provided and mute you to speak. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. While we encourage your comments, state law prevents the city council from discussing items that are not on their meeting agenda, and if appropriate, staff will follow up on them. I do have one hand raised. Danny Dorman, I'll go ahead and share the speaker screen. And I'll call on Danny Dorman. Mr. Dorman, go ahead.
There it is. Great. Good evening and congratulations. We finally have a a saying, even though it's just for one day. So let me read what I wrote. So in case you, the audience has missed it, the council agenda item four removes the need to give the quarter million dollar man extra money to his pocket. Thank you, council, for doing the right thing. And by the way, for those who are listening, it's on page 720 of the agenda packet. So in my three minutes and less of today's rant, I hate to say demand, but doggone it, asking just doesn't seem to work. A report from staff on how agenda items are prioritized. I'm really tired of staff either burying something in the consent calendar or placing it so far down that most people don't stick around, they hear it. Number two, which is probably more of a rhetorical question, why aren't Joel and Johnny in attendance? Again, it's a rhetorical question because we do still have Zoom. Last I looked, you can zoom in from anywhere. Case in point, that's what you're doing right now. Now, God forbid that it's something, you know, that that's a family emergency. It just seems to be a coincidence that agenda item number four would, they would have to officially say one way or the other, which way they're voting. I think we all know which way they would vote. I had mentioned this to somebody earlier, ironically, about the quarter million dollar man and his contract. Susanna tried to abstain, but the abstention would have counted as a yes, I believe. And so she did her due diligence and duty and proclaimed, no, we shouldn't keep this contract with this guy. So back to Joel and Johnny. Maybe a future agenda item would be when you're not in the meeting to explain why you're not there at the next meeting because the old dog ate my homework. And the fact is that you, the council, they work for us. And you wouldn't just let an employee just take the day off and not explain why. And this last piece in the 10 seconds I have left, there's not such a demand in this tonight's agenda. It seems like it's soft. It seems like it was done on purpose. Thank you.
Before we move on, if if there is staff who might be able to address why the the mayor and the vice mayor aren't in, I believe the mayor is out of wireless in an area that doesn't have wireless. But do we know why they're out of attendance?
This is Mickey. Damien, I'll defer to you. Do you do you have detail on why they are out of attendance today?
No, I don't. They're they're not at the meeting today. I I think Councilmember Rary is right. I believe the mayor doesn't have Wi-Fi service where he is to be able to participate via Zoom. I do not know about the vice mayor and and where he is.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rod. Rod, go ahead.
Thank you, Margaret. I'll be brief. I just wanted to say that I really like the council I'm seeing tonight. This looks like the future of Brentwood, not the past. And I think I'm almost glad that Joel and Johnny aren't here, just so the city can see you guys. Guys can see you women up there and see what you're doing and really appreciate the job that you do every every other Tuesday. Also, I think the previous caller will be amused to know that agenda item four is no longer agenda item four. It's number eight on the consent calendar. So that's just a just a little bit of a of a humorous thing to me. So anyway, I'm looking forward to seeing this meeting tonight. Go get them all of you. Thank you.
Councilmember Rary, did the agenda change?
I just looked at the red agenda and it's there's not in the, I don't see it there. I don't see it in the consent calendar.
Okay.
Oh, I'm looking at the 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 interactive page, and there is a number eight, but it may have been moved. I'm not looking at the, I should probably look at the agenda packet. Excuse me if that's not true anymore.
Okay.
That was all I had.
Okay, thank you, Rod.
I'm sorry.
Hello, I just clicked on mute, but I wasn't called, so I'm not sure. This is Cynthia Nattador.
Okay, Cynthia Nattador.
Can you hear me? Okay, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. As Rod said, I really like this format, and I'm looking forward to a meeting well-run, to the point, very well researched items to be discussed. And another item that I have on my list is to thank you, Karen Rary, Avita Mendoza, and Susanna Meyer for your research and fighting for the resident on the Vineyard Academy's item. We are looking forward to see the results and avoiding the look of Trailer Park on that empty lot behind the Rock Church. So I want to thank you in the in the name of my neighbors. And again, we're looking forward to see the project materializing and having a great Christian private school in our neighborhood. Thank you again, and have a great meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional speakers with their hands raised.
Okay, with that, we will move on to agenda item A, informational reports from council members, committees, liaisons, and staff, and Councilmember Mendoza, would you like to kick it off?
Sure. So I attended the Contra Costa County Planning Commission oil and gas drilling portion of it initiative call around fundraising for the Arnie Wood Voices. I volunteered at a Mother's Day slash vaccine clinic for field workers, and I got my second booster because I'm old enough to do that. A presentation from Gigi Crowder around mental health and the new role of NAMI. Candidates Forum for the Contra Costa District Attorney attended the Cali Call, which is a call for locals electeds around the state of California. And it's we reviewed the State Audit Department, the State Finance Department audit and HCD housing requirements number that we talked about during our Housing Element update. I had an interagency meeting with, you know, the schools, the fire department, and the police department. I actually had a call from residents around Dolphin Park. Someone was putting up jumpy's and doing things that are not allowed, so we had to take care of that. Mayor Mayor's conference call, which Mayor Bryant did ask for the presentation, and we did ask for a moratorium on tobacco, new smoke shops. And I sadly have to say, we actually have the worst ordinances around tobacco in Contra Costa County. So I think that's a good first step, but we have more to do. Cal City's Roundtable, Cal City's Housing Committee meeting, where I did have a public comment around local control, had another elected meeting around AB 2011, which is around more building. And it's by right, so the city won't have anything to say. So if you all are not busy, you can go to the Alliance page and look up what's going to be spoken about tomorrow. You can speak up for or against bills, the Heritage High School graduation, and another Cali call. But we went over all of the bills, and again, three of them are going to be on calendar tomorrow, and you can call against those and see them on the Alliance for a Better Brentwood page. Thank you.
And Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you. Went to the Cal City's Leaders Summit in Sacramento, scheduled a meeting with Senator Glazer and his Chief of Staff to go over some league-focused bills related to local control and land use. Facilitated a few meetings, attended the Contra Costa County Planning Commission discussion of the update to the open space and conservation portion of the general plan to include an oil and gas drilling ban. Attended the Cali meeting regarding audit of the state Rena numbers. And I was a guest speaker at the Opportunity Junction Administrative Professionals Program Graduation Ceremony, attended the Housing Element Workshop, the League of Cities Quarterly Meeting for Department Officers, and the League Officers debrief for the City Leaders Summit to figure out what we liked and didn't like for next year. Attended the Heritage High School graduation and also attended the Liberty High School graduation and had a meeting with Bruce Mulder to discuss youth services, activities, resources, and gaps in what we have available to youth in East County. Thank you.
Great. And what did I do? Since the last meeting, I also attended the Cal City Leaders Summit. And at the summit, I attended a city's role in modernizing California's Behavioral Health Continuum, planning for the communities tomorrow, the intersection of land use and state climate goals, critical communication skills for city leaders, finding successors, finding future leaders in your city staff, emerging issues and cutting-edge solutions for challenges facing California cities, food for thought, ingredients for a vital downtown in a post-COVID digital world. Build it. They will come creating an excellent workplace culture, land use and zoning, who is making the decisions. Stop shooting yourself. Strategies for high performers, and attended the Darshana, a glimpse into Hindu civilization event here in Brentwood. Attended a meeting with our city attorney. I attended the John Marsh Historic Trust meeting, and the Native Daughters of the Golden West visited the John Marsh House with their statewide grand president from Fort Bragg. And representatives from their Livermore and Modesto parlors were also in attendance, and they learned more about about the John Marsh House and the state park. And it's an organization that was for women born in California, and they focus on care preservation of California history. I also was contacted regarding Dolphin Park and went out there and sat waiting for the bounce house to be taken down, which which it finally was, and attended the East Contra Costa Fire Protection District Station 55, which will be Station 95 when it is taken over by the Contra Costa County Fire Protection District on July 1st. I attended the Housing Adult Elements Special Workshop, a PAL board meeting, and the Cal City's Public Safety Policy Committee. And at this time, does Acting City Manager Saboda, do you have staff, do you or your staff have updates to share?
The only update is that I erroneously provided the wrong date at the beginning of the meeting. So I had one job and I messed it up. So today's actually June the 14th, not May, so I apologize for that. But other than that, I've got no updates. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So with that, we'll move into agenda item B, Consent Calendar. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt consent calendar as is, no polls.
A second.
Second. All those in favor, if we can have roll call?
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Hi.
Motion carries with Vice Mayor Rodriguez and Mayor Bryant absent.
Wonderful. And on to agenda item C, public hearings. So C1 is under Alexis Morris. If that's continuance of the second reading of ordinance number 1038 of the City Council of the City of Brentwood, mending Title 15 Buildings in Construction, Chapter 15.06 of the Brentwood Municipal Code to adopt by reference to 2019 Edition, the California Fire Code, California Code of Regulations, Title 20, Part 9 is meant by the Contra Costa Fire Protection District Ordinance 2019-37, including findings and support amendments to the 2019 California Building Standards Code, Title 24, Part 9, California Fire Code. And this item is a continuation to June 28th of the adoption of the 2019 California Fire Code. And we do have Assistant City, I'm sorry, we have Assistant City Manager Darren Gale, who will make a brief introduction.
Thank you, Councilmember. This item was originally scheduled for this evening, for the council meeting, for your second reading. However, the paper did not publish the public hearing notices required necessitating a continuance of this item to the next regular city council meeting of June 28th.
Okay, and if you have clarifying questions to staff regarding the continuance, please raise your hand, and I will call on you in order for staff to respond. No questions? So if there are no other questions from council, I will now open the public comment area regarding the request to continue. Speakers should limit their comments to the continuation of the hearing and reserve comments regarding the merits of the ordinance until it's heard on June 28th.
If you, I received no written public comments on this item. If you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature. I'll call your name if provided and unmute you to speak. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. And I see no hands raised.
Okay, if there are no other speakers, I will close the public comments. Do we, because this was a public hearing, do we need to have a motion?
Councilmember Rary and members of the city council, in this instance, no, because you're, the period itself will occur at your next meeting. This is just the public comment for the continuance, but that's a good question.
Okay. If there are no other questions or comments, I'll now take a motion on the request to continue.
As detailed in the staff report, I would like to continue the sighting to the city council meeting of June 28th, 2022. I'll second that.
Okay, and roll call vote?
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Hi.
Motion carries with Vice Mayor Rodriguez and Mayor Bryant absent.
Okay, on to item C2, opening and continuation until June 28th, 2022 of a public hearing regarding actions pertaining to the City's Landscape and Lighting Assessment District, Landscape and Lighting Assessment District number 19-3, Landscape and Lighting Assessment District number 21-1, and Citywide Park Maintenance District 98-1 for fiscal year 2022-23. I understand that tonight we will open and then vote on continuing the public hearing until June 28th, at which at which point we'll have a full staff presentation. Parks Manager Aaron Wandon will make a brief introduction.
Thank you and good evening, council members. As you know, each fiscal year, the city council considers the annual approval of the City Landscape and Lighting Assessment Districts, the City Park Maintenance District, and then takes related actions. Procedurally, the council declares its intention to order improvements for these districts and accepts the preliminary engineers' reports, and then sets a public hearing date to which the final action is taken. This year, the city council set the public hearing on this matter for June 14th. However, the newspaper of record did not publish notice of the meeting when required. So as a legal matter, we have determined that it is thus necessary to continue the public hearing so that the proper notice may be published for the final hearing to be to be held on June 28th. Given the public notice requirements contained in the California Streets and Highway Codes, it is recommended that the city council defer the staff presentation on this item until June 28th. That being said, because the resolution of intention sets June 14th as the hearing, staff also recommends that the city council open the public hearing tonight and take testimony tonight, and then continue the public hearing on June 28th so that proper notice may be published. We have received confirmation from the press that the new notice was inserted on June 10th. So that does meet the requirement of 10, of at least 10 days prior to the hearing. So that makes us good to go on the 28th as far as the notice of the hearing. I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have. Thank you.
If you have clarifying questions to staff, please raise your hand. I will call on you in order for staff to respond. And Councilmember Mendoza?
We, our discussion about the items and the amounts, and that's next week, right? And then two weeks, not today. Okay, just making sure.
We'll cover it all on the 28th.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? So if there are no other questions from council, I will now open the public hearing.
I received no written public comments on this item. If you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature. I'll call your name if provided and unmute you to speak. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. I do see one hand raised, and I'll go ahead and share my screen. And I'll call on Rod. Rod, go ahead.
Thank you. I'll be brief. I just noticed that LAD 21-1 is the new Deer Ridge LAD that's going to be worked on, that's actually being worked on. And so thank you very much to the city for helping us get that started, and we're very pleased to see that going on. And I'm actually kind of glad that this is being continued for two weeks because there's other things that have our attention this time around, and we'll we'll be wanting to go through that pretty carefully before the next meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any additional speakers under the public hearing tonight? I will now take a motion on the continuance when we'll conclude this hearing.
As detailed in the staff report, continue the public hearing to the city council's meeting of June 28th, 2022.
Okay, council roll call vote?
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Hi.
Motion carries with Vice Mayor Rodriguez and Mayor Bryant absent.
Okay, on to agenda item C3, Resolution Amending the City of Brentwood 2021-22 Cost Allocation Plan is Scheduled, City Fees Related to the Timing of the Consumer Price Index Injustments and Revisions to the Parks and Recreation Peace and Finding that Proposed Amendments Do Not Constitute Project for the Purposes of the California Environmental Quality Act. Item C pertains to amending the City of Brentwood 2021-22 Cost Allocation Plan is Scheduled, Use for Parks and Recreation. Actor Recreation Manager Ben Kasich will present this item.
We can't hear, we can't hear you, Ben. We can't hear, we can't hear you, Ben. No, maybe you can call in on the phone? No.
Do you have headphones you can plug in?
I think he's dialing in. You know, when it gives you the option to, I do that, I have to do that all the time.
This is Mickey, if we're having technical difficulties, Ben, are you there?
Yeah.
Awesome, thank you for your patience. It actually made me call, it worked earlier this morning and did not work today, unfortunately. And so, everyone can hear me and see me. So, good evening, city council members. Tonight, my name is Ben Kasek. I'm an interim recreation manager with the City of Brentwood. Tonight before you have a public hearing regarding a resolution amending the City of Brentwood 2021-2022 Cost Allocation Plan and Schedule of Fees Related to the Timing of Consumer Price Index Adjustments and Proposed Revisions to the Parks and Recreation Fees. Recreation staff review the fees annually to ensure that they meet cost recovery goals and are appropriate and in a competitive local market. Upon review, the staff is recommending a few of the following changes. One, ACF exemption, so in early June 2022, recreation staff provides all program budget seats to ensure the current fees meet the approved cost recovery goals. In addition, a market analysis is conducted to ensure rates are competitive and in line with a local market rate. Since the fees are currently meeting the cost recovery guidelines and set in the Council Administrative Policy 10-5 and Budget Fiscal Policy Section 5.8 Recreation Programs and are market appropriate, staff recommends the fees be exempt from the CPI increase on July 1st, 2022. The second thing is we're requesting or recommending specific fees increases due to increases in costs associated with maintaining picnic areas and ball fields. The increased utility costs incurred by field lighting, staff has recommending gradual fee increases in these areas over the next five years. For fiscal year 2022-2023, staff recommends a 3% increase in picnic and ball field rental rates and a 20% increase in ball field lighting fees. Recommendation number three, aligning non-resident fees with policy. While reviewing fees, staff noticed that some of the current non-resident fees were not aligned with the Council Administrative Policy 10-5, Budget and Fiscal Policy Section 5.8 Recreation Programs. The proposed fees for fiscal 2022-2023 include revised non-resident fees consistent with policy. A list of current and proposed recreation programs and facility rental fees may be found in Exhibit A in your agenda packet. Also, if you notice in your agenda packet, I did want to point out a few highlights. You'll notice things such as like activities that may be crossed out. For example, Jump Bunch Saturday Classes, Cooking Around the World, some virtual classes. Some of those programs are actually just reformatted. So the Saturday classes are actually just included in the regular Jump Bunch Sports Classes. The Cooking Around the World classes were actually taught by an instructor that's no longer teaching those classes anymore. And so, we're actually exploring, potentially doing a request for proposal for an actual cooking instructor to bring those services back to the community. And then some stuff such as like the swim lessons, youth dance and gymnastics classes were brought from, instead of a six-week program, they were brought to a per day and that gives staff more flexibility to offer programs if they're six weeks, seven weeks, eight weeks. We don't have to make that adjustment and do more budget sheets. We can operate under that one sheet. And so, that concludes my presentation and I'm available for any questions.
Just a minute. So if you have clarifying questions to staff, please raise your hand. I'm calling you in order for staff to respond. And we have Councilmember Mendoza.
Hello, thank you. Ben, I'm a little concerned about the 20% raise on the ball field lighting. What cut, what drove the 20%? Did we get notification, someone that our cost was going up 20%?
Our cost actually went up more than 20%. So during 2020, PG&E increased their fees and we've increased our usage. And so, the fee specifically between four and eight went drastically up. And so, the 20% is actually, we're proposing a gradual increase of 20% to catch up to where we're already behind.
So, um, for like, if I'm a team and I want to run it for a game, what was the cost before and what is it now? What's the impact to the resident, the renter?
Give me one second. So that fee, I believe, went from $35 an hour to $42 an hour.
Okay. And that's only for adult games then? Not, no light, no electricity during the day? So it's, does it only, does it impact the adult leagues more than the kids leagues?
So that actually only affects, it doesn't affect any of our leagues. We're already, we're already paying for that cost. That's for outside rentals, such as like Pony Baseball Impact. That would be those kind of fees.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And it, that's only the, the light fee. That's actually not the field rental fee.
Yeah, but it's only if they need it in the evening, not daytime. So it's only for the evening games, I'm assuming. You're not going to need lights during the day. Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Councilmember Meyer?
Thank you. Um, thanks, Ben. I, my question is about lower-income residents having access to scholarships for some of these programs. I just wanted to get a little clarification on that. And I'm curious if we do have those scholarships for lower-income residents of Brentwood, what about people that are living outside of Brentwood that don't necessarily have access to programs but are coming into our city for these programs? Can you offer some feedback on that, please?
Uh, yeah, so we do have our youth scholarship application. And so, what that does, it's, they can fill out this application and the, basically, the eligibility guidelines are based on the Contra Costa County Affordable Housing Income Limits. And it's, you have to be a Brentwood resident. It's $125 per person and then 125 per person and that can cover the full price of any activity they would like to participate. But that is only for Brentwood residents.
Okay, great, thank you.
Welcome.
All right. So if there are no other questions from the council, I will now open the public hearing.
I received no public comments, written public comments on this item. If you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature. I'll call your name if provided and unmute you to speak. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. And I see no hands raised.
Okay. Since there are no speakers, I will need a motion to close the public hearing.
No moves?
I can't.
Okay. Roll, council roll call vote?
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
I.
Motion carries with Vice Mayor Rodriguez and Mayor Bryant absent.
Is there any council discussion? If there are no other questions or comments? Well, wait, I didn't see, I'm sorry. There's Councilmember Mendoza.
I just want to say thanks to Park and Rec. I know this is a lot of work to do, all the detailed accounting and allocation. So I appreciate all the work that you do in this and, but as a resident, I appreciate you keeping the costs low when you're able to do so. So I know that some things are going up, but those are outside of our hands, like electricity. And I do appreciate the daily passes. As a mom with kids, sometimes you don't want to go five days a week and so you'd rather just pay for the four days a week. So thank you so much for taking into account the feedback that you got from residents and all the hard work.
Are there any other questions or comments by council? All right, with that, I'll now take a motion on the resolution.
As detailed in the staff report, adopt a resolution amending City of Brentwood 2021-22 Cost Allocation Plan and Schedule of City Fees for Revision to Parks and Recreation Fees. And I will second that.
Council roll call vote?
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
I.
Motion carries with Vice Mayor Rodriguez and Mayor Bryant absent.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to Agenda D, the Business Items. And D1, receive information regarding services provided by Contra Costa County Animal Services and consider the adoption of resolution approving and authorizing city manager or designate me to execute a city-county animal service agreement with a fiscal year 2022-23 cost of $526,000.
I think we lost Councilmember Rary.
Yeah, she's gone.
She's, excuse me, I'm sorry, I think she is.
Oh, there she is.
The.
Yeah, I just all of a sudden got a thing that joined back up as a panelist. Okay, so Captain Doug Silva will introduce this item and Contra Costa Animal Services Director Beth Ward for a presentation.
Test 12, test 12. All right, good evening, Honorable Chairperson Rary, council members, city staff and members of the community who are zoomed in. In response to a prior council request to receive information on animal services in our city, I invited the Director of Contra Costa County Animal Services to provide us with a presentation. Beth Ward has been the director for the past seven years with almost 30 years of Bay Area animal services experience. Director Ward is a Brentwood resident committed to providing the best, most efficient services possible to protect the public and the animals in our community. There's a lot more to animal services than many may realize when it comes to relationships between our patrol officers and animal services staff, oftentimes collaborating on criminal investigations and even tactical operations. Historically, the city and especially your police department have enjoyed a healthy, professional working relationship with Director Ward and her personnel. So please join me in welcoming Contra Costa County Animal Services Director Beth Ward.
Thank you, Captain Silva. Excuse me, and so, if it's okay with you, I'd like to start to share my screen. Oops, sorry, my apologies, I started in the middle. There we go. So again, thank you, Captain Silva. I appreciate the introduction and kind words. Mayor, council members, city staff and Brentwood residents. My name is Beth Ward and I'm the Director of Contra Costa Animal Services. I appreciate the opportunity to present information around our animal service agreement this evening. I'd like our city partners in Brentwood to know that it is our goal of mine and my department to support you and your community residents with a service that is effective, efficient and financially sustainable while being rooted in belonging, neutrality, equity and justice. So I'd like to kind of start our presentation by sharing with you an agency snapshot. This is a document that we've created for the City of Brentwood so that you can share it on your website. You could have it printed out in City Hall, staff could hand it out or we could distribute it in any manner in which you would like it to be done. As Captain Silva mentioned, our agency is much more than just the law enforcement unit that many people relate for animal services. We have our Martinez Shelter. It's about a 38,000 square foot facility built back in 2005 that is a place to where all the animals in Contra Costa County come to for care while they're waiting either to be reunited with families and/or reunited with new families. Our law enforcement unit is the animal control officers that most people relate to field services and they are out in force throughout our county. They cover the entire county and we're here to be able to make sure that you have the service that you need when you need it. Where our animal care unit provides daily animal care for dogs, cats, rabbits, geese, horses, goats, you name it, it pretty much comes into us. And then we also have a veterinary team that provides the medical care for those animals if they come into a sick, injured and/or needing any kind of medical care until they can be reunited. And then our administrative unit is the staff that are answering the calls when people call in and we partner with the Contra Costa Sheriff's Department for our dispatching services, which is managed through an admin unit. And then our volunteer unit is not, I would say, but not, definitely not least. They are very core to the work that we do and be able to provide for the mental stimulation and love and care for the animals while they're waiting to be reunited. The back part of this flyer, it shows the actual services that we provide, the compassionate action, and we have a list of our public safety services and our community services that have a wide range of services that many people don't realize that not only are we out there picking up stray dogs, but we're also quarantining dangerous animals. We're doing investigations on noise issues or animal cruelty, dangerous animals, as I mentioned before. And then we also provide a lot of community services looking for pet adoptions, lost pets. We have a public low-cost spay and neuter clinic. We do work with community cat folks to help get them spayed and neutered, taken care of in our community and then of course, our volunteer program. On this flyer, we also thought it would be helpful for, we've received feedback from citizens that they'd like to know what does it cost for them to be able to have services in their city? And so, this little square off to the side actually shows for this fiscal year, fiscal year 21-22, is $6.79 per capita. And during COVID, we actually put a lot of things online. So it's really easy for residents to get assistance. It's just one click away. They are able to start an adoption process. They can report lost pets, they can do noise ordinances and report deceased animals. And then on back here, we have a little QR code that helps them to see our very cute adoptable animals. So our top activities in Brentwood, of course, for 2021, it was the investigation activities, which is bite investigations and inhumane investigations. Those had increased in Brentwood in 2021 as compared to 2020. Stray animals actually decreased a little bit and some of that is because we have some really good networking in the City of Brentwood with Nextdoor and also our police department is very kind and they'll, they'll respond to a stray animal and the person looking for their pet will be right around the corner and they'll be able to get it from them before we get out there to them. And then we also have our deceased animal activities and the good news is that has decreased slightly in 2021 compared to 2020. So going through our agreement, I wanted to, you know, I appreciate the staff report and the recommendations around the service agreement. But I want to take a minute and try and provide you with an additional summary. So the history with the agreements between the county and the cities goes back to the 1980s and it has been a very strong steadfast support between the county and our city, our 18 cities since the early 80s. And we, our last agreement actually was codified, excuse me, in 2006 and there hasn't been an agreement since then. And as such, it's been a little bit on the archaic side. The original agreement is about a page and a quarter long. And really, if you've looked at it, all it says is that we will uphold all state and local animal-related laws and we'll do it the same way that we did it in 2005. In discussing with our city managers, police chiefs, hearing from our residents, no one knew what that meant. What does that mean? Are we, are we doing a good job? Are we doing a bad job? How can, what, how do we define what the services are that we have? So over the last five to six years, we sat down with our city managers, police chiefs, city staff, and we also got feedback from the public through surveys and also from our interactions with the public out in the field. And we found that we needed a much more detailed agreement so that it would actually kind of define what we do and show that it's not just about the animal control officers in the field. So this agreement reflects all of that feedback and it is going to serve as a foundation for us to build into the next generation of animal services for Contra Costa County. And the key also is that it is sustainable. Our prior agreement was not sustainable. Our organization, it was interesting listening to the Parks and Rec Department talk about a cost recovery plan. Our fee plan prior to this was not a cost recovery plan. It was just an increase on the CPI and from 2008 to 2015, there were no increases between our cities to the county to be, be able to pay for services. What ended up happening is that we ended up having jobs that, as they. jobs that as they vacated, we were not able to fill them because we didn't have the funding. And as such, we started to see that our services and our service levels start to slip. And this is why we've worked together with our city managers and city police chiefs to be able to rectify that situation. And that's why we bring you the updated agreement that has much greater detail regarding our service levels. It talks about all the different specific areas of the agreement under our areas of operation. Can it be more detailed? Sure. There's you, I'm sure you've heard that there's agreements out there that are one hundred and forty-five pages long. The county of San Mateo, they, my good friend of mine runs that. They've gone whole hog into it, and the reason is, is because they've had a history of challenges, and they've built upon that over the years. I was, used to be there back in the nineteen nineties. And so we wanted to say, okay, this is a foundation. This is our specific services that are provided. We wanted also say, these are some target response times for each of the activities, because in the past, who's to say that we were doing a good job or not? We couldn't tell you because we didn't know. We weren't measuring those things. Now we measure our response time, so we'd know what the priority one response time is for our officers to get to the city of Brentwood. We look at those things, and we can try to manage our department better for, to provide you a better service. Defining what is covered under deceased animals. Deceased animals is not a mandated service by the state of California or by our local ordinances. However, it's a very, very important service that we provide to your citizens. I'm sure you've heard a lot of people asking about deceased animal pickups that in our past agreement actually didn't exist. But we've codified that under this agreement. We've also described services which are not included. I am sure some of you have heard about the whale that washed up in the city of Richmond on the beaches. The, it's an animal, but unfortunately, it's not an animal that we can help with. It's a marine animal. There's a lot of laws that are around that, and we don't have a boat service to be able to pull an animal out off of a beach. So that is something that we cannot do. So we're making sure that we're being very clear what we can do and what we can't do. And we're also looking at doing a annual meeting with our cities to say, how are things going? What are, do you need? How are things going in the animal welfare world? What's changing? And then be able to have discussions around that. We've never had that codified before, and this gives us the opportunity to do so. So the grant agreement fee structure, so a lot of people have asked, you know, the fees are going up, but we're not getting more services. I don't understand that. So it's true and not true. What the fees, the fee increases are actually just to cover the cost of our current business of doing, providing these services. As I mentioned before, things have kind of slipped backwards, and we had actually lost a lot of staff. And so what we're trying to do is be able to bring our service level back up to a acceptable level to provide an adequate level of service for each of the cities that we serve. So for this agreement, in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, our fee will be seven dollars and ninety-seven cents per person residing in the city limits of Brentwood. As, so the, the population is determined by the state's E-one report that is published in January of each year. Now, the potentially confusing part is that the E-one report that's published in January of two thousand and twenty-two actually reflects in the state the population of cities in January of two thousand and twenty-one. So it's, it's confusing. It's a January of two thousand and twenty-two report, but the population reflects January of two thousand and twenty-one, and it goes so on and so forth. And this has been something that has been in effect in our agreements since the nineteen eighties. And so there's no change to that. So, and then for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, the fees increased to nine dollars and eleven cents per capita. Now, we've added on top of that and working with the, the county to be able to start to build out some of our staffing levels so that we can better serve our community. Levels have slipped a little bit. So the phase one, back when you're the, in the twenty-two, twenty-three, the seven ninety-seven, we will also be adding one sergeant to our field service team, which will help us to increase our response times to dangerous animal cases. Those things, and also providing improved public support and training for our officers. We also will be adding an additional field utility worker to reduce the response times for the pickup of deceased animals by also allowing us to resume picking up deceased domestic animal pickups on private properties and is picking up deceased wildlife from private property per the county fee schedules for the homeowner. It will also help to support the animal services truck for deceased animal pickups. And then it will also bring us two full-time staff members that are coordinators for the care and the needs of the animals in the shelter. It will help us to enhance our life-saving programs that serve our county residents, such as our pet assistance programs that help assist keeping pets with families or helping them if they have to rehome them or helping them with a medical situation if they're having a, a financial challenge at home. We also are looking at how we can support our transfer partners or our rescue groups. That's what we call our rescue groups in our community, because they're helping us to be able to support animals coming from our shelters and to booster our adoption programs. Then in the phase two, which starts in that fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, we will be adding three additional field officers to expand our beat coverage and to further decrease our priority one response times. That also includes additional vehicles be able to help them to do their jobs. And then we'll also be bringing in an additional animal care coordinator that will help to look to methods in which we can decrease the length of stay for our impounded animals and to continue focus on pet retention and pet assistance program services. We'll also be bringing in a additional medical supervisor to increase the efficiency on our onsite low-cost spay and neuter and vaccine services for our county residents. The veterinary situation across the state of California is in dire straits. This is not a just unique Contra Costa County issue. There are more veterinarians that are retiring or leaving veterinary services than there are graduating from colleges. And so there's a lot of challenges out there for members of the public and getting adequate care for their animals. So we're looking at ways that we can be able to support those in better ways. So each fee in, in the phases are estimated using the revised fee methodology. Where we're looking at the budgeted cost, it's a, it's basically as the Parks and Rec were talking about it, where it's a cost recovery plan. Where the cost, the budgeted cost to provide services throughout the county in that fiscal year minus the sum of our, some of the revenues, like animal licensing fees, user fees, that are projected to be received at that fiscal year and minus the general fund contribution. And then we divide that by the population, by all the cities in which the county provides animal services, and that how, it's how it comes to a per capita basis. Now, some of our cities have been talking about exploring in the future whether we go to a, from, away from a per capita basis to a, like a activity basis. And that is something that in this fall, we'll be discussing through the public managers associations and through our chiefs. How do we, what does that look like? How does that, what effect would that be? Because right now, as I've done the studies, there are some cities that probably three out of eighteen, that that could be a benefit to. And then there's other cities, probably three out of eighteen again, that it could be a detriment to, and the other twelve, it really doesn't matter whether it's a per capita or an activity. It's pretty well balanced out, which is a phenomenal thing throughout the years. So each year, the other thing that we've put in here is that we will do a reconciliation report of our actual costs. They're incurred by our, the county to provide services for the preceding year. And we will be able to, if we're, there's cost savings, those cost savings would be through the same formula, looked at, and then the, let's say that it comes to a cost savings of twenty cents per capita. Those twenty cents per capita would be credited back to the, each city as appropriate the following fiscal year for the service, services during that fiscal year. And we've never done that before as a county in the past. If there was any savings, which there really wasn't, but if there was, it would have gone just back into the general fund. Again, we're looking at trying to provide you the best, most reasonable, cost-effective services that we can do as well as being. So now, I just wanted to touch base because I would assume you all have received some public comment in regards to questions. And I want to just address some of the, the top concerns that were there, talking about how the agreement's inadequate and doesn't include feedback from the cities. It does. Over the years that I've been here, literally, it started in January of two thousand and sixteen. I've met every year with our cities, our city managers, our staff, and we've had surveys out for the members of the public on service levels and what are people looking for. We also provide a service survey for people that are coming into the shelter, and what are they looking for, and how are we doing on that? So we have taken feedback from the cities on what these services look like, and we're looking to continue to improve upon that as we move forward. This agreement does not include services for injured wildlife. That is correct. It does not. This updated agreement focuses on the services that we are mandated to perform in your city as your animal services provider. An injured wildlife falls under the jurisdiction of the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. And I know that that creates some frustrations, but unfortunately, that is, we're, we do not have the staffing levels to be able to respond to wildlife calls in an appropriate manner. And we want to, again, provide the best service we can. Instead, what we're doing is we're looking at different ways that we can assist our residents in being able to appropriately respond to wildlife, and we're working with the Lindsay Wildlife Experience as well as the California State Department of Fish and Wildlife, and being able to develop programs such as been developed in Maraga. It's a wildlife watch program to help them with their coyote issues. So we'll be looking at things like that on a city-by-city basis and how we can help support cities to be able to deal with wildlife issues. The agreement does not include spay and neuter services, adoption program, pet retention, et cetera. So it never has. You know, there's never been anything to say that our county would provide those types of services. Those services actually just come out of need because the animals that come into the shelter, they need that care. They need to have a, an alternative to leave the shelter alive rather than being euthanized. And so those services have always been supported through the general fund contribution of Contra Costa County. So it is not something that we've ever passed on to our cities. If our cities would like to have that as part of their cost program, we'd be more than happy to discuss that because we'd love to expand on some of these programs. But it is not something that historically has been done. So at this time, we've continued to leave them out of the agreement. We didn't apply for Measure X funding. That is true. When Measure X funding became available, we reached out to the county administrator's office, and we were advised not to submit a request because our, our programs did not meet the requirements of the Measure X funding. And then at one point, we were given permission to draft a proposal for Measure X funding. But then, once it was created and submitted, it ultimately wasn't able to be permitted to be considered for the Measure X funding. So in the city's rates, per capita rates increases while the county contribution remains stagnant. So the county contribution has fluctuated over the years between three million to five million. And I, I wish I could give you an exact answer of why and how those numbers happened over the years. I have no response to that other than it's based on the need of the department and the ability of the county to be able to support the department in that way. I, the, the current commitment from the county has been to maintain it at a four-point-one-two million dollars. However, just in this year, we had a need because we wanted to expand on some of our spay and neuter programs. And so we put across a funding request, and they increased the general fund by two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So the county is willing to adjust. It's just that what they, when I say they, the people that made the comments saw is in some of our earlier proposals through the finance committee and also through the board of supervisors and to our cities, we did a five-year projection. And because we didn't have a commitment one way or the other, we maintained in our, our, our projection a constant in the general fund number, and that is what created the assumption of people that it would remain stagnant. But we were trying to give a projection of where our challenges lie. And, and I, I think our city managers all understood that, our police chiefs, but I think the citizens who had record requests, they didn't quite understand those dynamics. So thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to present to you, and I'd like to open up to any questions. Yes.
Thank you. If you have clarifying questions of staff, please raise your hand. I will call you in order for staff to respond. And with that, I have Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you. First of all, is anyone else hearing that feedback that's making it hard to understand? No, just me, huh?
Some of it.
A little bit. Okay, thank you, Director Ward, for that very thorough presentation. Just a few questions and follow-up. One of the questions was about field service officers. Where, where is their home base, and how many are there? How many hours and days are they available specifically to Brentwood, or is it just by call? Can you give me a little more information about that, please?
Certainly. So our officers are all based out of Martinez. We don't operate in a manner similar to the sheriff's department where they have the little substations throughout the county. So all of our officers are basically dispatched out of Martinez, and so that's where some of our challenges lie, right? And we have our county divided up into three. We try to, so we, we have officers out on the road from eight AM in the morning to nine PM at night, seven days a week. So those officers are divided up into three different bead areas. We try to ensure that we have no less than five officers out on the road at any one time. However, you know, with COVID challenges, et cetera, those are, those are different. These are different times, so sometimes that is a challenge. And they're generally assigned by beat. So East County, they may have two officers that are out there, Central two, and West County two, because ideally, like I said, five is the minimum, but we could have up to probably seven or eight at one time when we're fully staffed, and we have everybody supposed to be here, and all of our positions are filled. However, in the past, so right now, we have about sixteen officers, and in the past, we've had up to probably twenty-six officers. So you can imagine how it's been challenging for us to serve the entire county.
And what about volunteers?
So we have volunteers. Our volunteers are mostly operating out of the shelter. However, we do have some programs that reach out into the community. They do humane education programs, or they go out and they might assist somebody that's having, you know, like a senior citizen that's having a challenge with a particular animal or something along those lines. But the majority, I mean, literally, like ninety-seven percent of our volunteers work inside the shelter, working with animals, socializing them, trying to help get them adopted, trying to help get them rescued by rescue groups.
Would it be feasible to recruit more volunteers specific to areas?
Yeah, so we actually are looking at doing that, and that's actually came out of COVID. Because what we've found is we have a lot of people throughout the county that are really animal advocates, and they're out there really helping to these animals. We've also had some conversations with our city police chiefs about seeing if we could blend in with their volunteer programs because as, like a community service officers going out as volunteers and supporting, you know, people having questions about they found a stray dog, or they, they have a question about licensing or something like that. We could incorporate our trainings into their volunteer program trainings. Unfortunately, that started a conversation. Unfortunately, that started a conversation right before COVID and those conversations haven't continued as of yet, but they, I'm hoping that we do.
Thank you. What is the current wait time for two things, deceased animal pickup and also aggressive animal response?
So aggressive animal response, our priority time is two hours. And for the city of Brentwood, we're about eighty eight percent of the time on time within the two hour response time. The, when we have an aggressive animal, as Captain Sylvia said, really, a lot of times it's a nine one one call and our our local PDs are responsive on the scenes even before we would even have a chance to get there. But we do try to get out there in a two hour window. And then as far as deceased animal pickup, currently, it is that we're trying to get out there to animals within a twenty four hour period. However, again, with COVID, we've had challenges where we have that staff member, the two staff members out that are supposed to be doing, you know, one particular area because they have to be divided up into the beat areas. And they might be out sick or they might have, you know, been injured or something along those lines. And so that delays our response. That's why we're looking at adding that additional staff person in this upcoming fiscal year.
Okay. And then my last question is about the per capita cost. It's the increase has not been incremental. It's been more about what your costs are and you just raise it to, I mean, can you explain that a little bit more?
So that's for this fiscal year and next fiscal year. And basically, what you could envision those are is basically like they're catch up years because we're trying to right the ship. We we basically have been, you know, floating along over the years and our ship had turned basically upside down. And so our service levels were being extremely hamstrung. And so what this does is it gets us to where we are, have righted the ship again by fiscal year twenty three, twenty four. Our ship is righted again. And we've also provided staff to firmly create a foundation for building services to our cities. After that, it'll be on a cost. Again, very similar to how your rec department was talking about, we look at costs that increase. We want to keep our costs down as much as possible. Our goal is very similar to what he was explaining. You know, we're looking at market. We our costs are far below what the market is out in the Bay Area. You know, even at the nine dollars and eleven cents, we're, we, meaning Contra Costa County residents and myself as a city of Brentwood resident are paying almost fifty percent less than other cities in our jurisdiction. So an example, the city of Antioch, they do their own animal services. Last year, their budget for animal services only was two point two million dollars. That was their cost. And this year, I haven't heard if it's passed yet or not. They're asking to add four additional staff persons, which they need desperately. They're way understaffed. But they're adding four more staff people, which will add another about five hundred to six hundred thousand dollars to that our existing budget. So our, we, I know it's 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 hard for the cities to bear. And that's why when we first presented the cost increase to the cities and our cities shared their their concerns with such a big jump in costs and I and I understand that. We went back and we talked with the C O's office and we came up with a two-phase plan to get that ship righted back up, right? And then after that, it's on a cost recovery basis. And and again, you know, for the first time ever, I can honestly say we have a document and we have a relationship that enables us to talk between our city partners and the county to say, what do you need? How can we do it? Are we doing it well? And how do we grow it? It could be that from this point on, we agree that it stays stagnant. Or it could be that the cities say, oh, we need to do this. But everybody will have a voice at the table, whereas they didn't in the past.
Great, very helpful. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Ward. I appreciate your presentation. I have a quick question just about the county contribution remains stagnant. It was your last slide. The per capita, so do you calculate per capita by city demand? Is that what I'm hearing? Like, it's whatever, or is it across the county?
It's across county. So so, you know, basically, you know, let's say if you have a hundred people and you have ten cities and each city has ten people, then each city will pay ten people's share.
Okay. So then people in the county that head count is paying, is going to pay the same seven ninety seven per head count? And then the nine eleven per head count, correct? In the county?
And all the cities, all of our contracted cities pay the same. This is what this is what is the, as I was told by my predecessor when I came into this, this is the blessing and the curse. Because I have eighteen cities and everybody has the same agreement. And that's also a curse because it's really different because I have very, I have very unique cities.
Yes.
But I, but that's our goal.
Perfect. I just, I just want to clarify that one. What said county remains their county, I think the slide said county contribution remains stagnant. I'm like, wait, are there are they staying flat if they're county cities and then we go up? Like, I'm sorry about that. I just misunderstood that.
Well, no, so let me clarify. So when we're talking about the county contribution, that's the general fund contribution from the county. Okay, so the county provides various departments funding through the county to support those departments. Our department is supported by general fund money. And so the assumption by the residents, the people that made the comments was that that's going to stay the same. It's going to be stagnant across the board. That's not necessarily true. It will fluctuate. But our discussions with the county is that they will ensure that it maintains at the four point one two, if not above, right? So and we're not looking and the county is not looking for reducing the county contribution to make the cities have to pay more. That is not our county, I and I will say this, you know, again, I've been in this business and I've worked with Santa Clara County. I've worked with San Mateo County. Our county is actually very fair in regards to that and it hasn't ever put too much onto the cities as far as animal services go. So I I think that it's a it's a fair equitable agreement to move forward. And again, it gives us a chance to have discussions going in the future because COVID changed the world.
Yep.
I don't, I don't know what three years from now is going to look like. And we need to have the ability to have these good conversations.
Right. Well, if you ever need public comment from us when budget time comes up and you're not happy with what you're seeing, let us know. We're happy to go speak it.
I appreciate that.
So I think I wanted clarification on that last one. So let's say the town Discovery Bay or Bay Point, those are all county towns.
Right.
They're not, the the county is paying in X amount of dollars, but do their residential areas pay like we do the seven ninety seven?
No. So they're all, if they're unincorporated areas, they're all under the general fund contribution. Yeah. And so the general fund contribution covers that cost on a per capita basis plus about three million dollars on top of that.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. And get to all my questions.
Karen, can I ask a follow up to that?
Sure.
So so then basically they are paying, so it's basically two buckets, the per capita and then plus all the extra. Like if you were, it's what if you could divide that, they they are paying a per capita, just like Brentwood residents are paying, and then you have extra on top of that.
Correct. Yeah. If you wanted to put it into buckets, yes, you would do.
Okay, thanks.
All right. So in the paperwork that was provided to us with the two thousand and six Animal Services Agreement, it says, under the Animal Housing and Care subsection C, conduct low-cost rabies vaccination clinics. And and currently on the website, it states that the low-cost vaccination clinics are held on Wednesday from twelve to two PM and Thursdays from ten to twelve PM. Can you tell me approximately how many appointments are available to the public during those four hour, four hours each week?
So it depends on what those animals are getting, but I I think you're probably looking about eighteen a day, give or take. And that because that's the vaccines, not necessarily animals, but vaccines.
Okay. And so and and are there appointments that are available during that time or or is it, or is it just here's, you're open for those two hours and?
And no, they're 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 done by appointment. We used to do them where it was first come, first served and we actually would have fights and arguments in the parking lot. So we went to an appointment basis and it's actually been working out very, very well.
Okay. And under the new City-County Animal Services Agreement, under Medical Services, it says that the county animal services will have a minimum of one vaccine clinic per month. So since the county animal services currently offers four hours a week for vaccinations or approximately sixteen to twenty hours spending, we have four or five weeks in a month. How many hours will the single monthly low-cost vaccine clinic be open? And approximately, how many appointments will be available to the public?
So the the single is actually just a minimum of what is done. So we're we're I could get, I could almost guarantee you that we will always do above and beyond the minimum. Our goal is to get as many animals vaccinated as we possibly can as our staffing levels will allow. By state law, we're only required to do it once a month. But we want to try to do it more than that. And that's why we're doing it different. We're actually, it's kind of taste testing right now, different times of day, trying to see what works best with our members of the public and also make it accessible. We also are, we also have, not going to, but we have also taken out mobile clinics where we bring, like, actually, we did it at Supervisor's Office. Oh, I don't know, eight months ago, we did a microchip clinic out there. And so we could do vaccine clinics, the same thing. So.
Okay. And also in that two thousand and six documentation, it states the importance of the county's low-cost spay and neuter clinics were significant, were significantly reduce the amount of dogs and cats euthanized in our county. And my understanding is that the county animal services currently does four spay and neuter appointments per day, four days a week.
So so the, so our, we actually have staff that are doing surgeries five days a week. We do all the animals that come through the shelter as well as animals that are, you know, being identified as potentially dangerous or they're being reclaimed by their owners, they're being adopted, all of those animals are being done. We do an average of about twenty five surgeries a day. And what you're quoting is on our website is what we are able to provide to a member of the public of up to four public surgeries a day. And I don't know how to explain it, but it's kind of challenging because you have you have a certain number of surgeries that could be done in a day within reason because and it depends on the mix because a male cat can take you two minutes to do surgery on two to five minutes. A female dog in heat, a big, you know, a little pit bull, she might take you forty five minutes to do. So it really can fluctuate on what the needs are. So we have animals coming through the back part of the shelter and then we have the public facing that come in. So we have a competition of of need, right? So we have to balance that. So the way we balance that is that we have opened up four surgery slots for members of the public. At this time, that this is actually will be increasing starting July first or actually after we get the staffing hired after July first to be able to increase those number of surgeries because we'll be able to increase the number of hours in our surgery day. And the other competition that is actually hindering our public surgeries are, we're performing up to eight community cat spays or neuters a day for members of the public that are trapping community cats. And that unfortunately is taking up a lion's share of our public surgery slots. So it's, again, we're trying to find this balance between things. And we're only one agency with so many staff and so many hours in a day and it gets to be a challenge. So we, our goal is to do as many as we possibly can. I have staff that that's their whole reason they get up in the morning is to get up and go out and spay and neuter as many animals as they can. So and and we're also partnering with other agencies, like we have contracts with other local vets that we're helping to provide no cost or low cost surgeries to Contra Costa County residents. And we put, we give out about a hundred, hundred, well, this year will be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to our nonprofit groups to be able to help them to get animals spayed or neutered out with community veterinarians. Because again, we can't do it all. If we would if we could, but we can't. So we have to branch it out to our community members to help us to get those animals done.
And and would those be the spay neuter resources that you have on your website? Is that what you're talking about?
Some, some of them are, some of the, so the, if you're talking about the nonprofit groups, some, some of those are listed in resources and then some are resources that are not funded through us.
Okay.
On the website.
So when you came probably in two thousand and sixteen, because you had that you had just started, actually, it would have been two thousand and seventeen, just started. And and back then, I brought up to you the application and how frustrating it was on your application that that to adopt, you would have to bring in every member of your household and every pet in your household in order to go through the adoption process. And you said that that was something you're looking at changing. Has that changed?
Yes, it has. Yes, it has. And it's, it's, I will say this, that it's still a challenge because we have some people who are supporting adoptions that still feel that they maybe they don't, there's something they're not feeling good about that person. So they're gonna say, hey, how about we see, you know, what does your husband say or or, you know, you know, why don't we see if we could do a meet and greet with your dog? Our policy is not that. And so we try to work with the members of the public to try to find the best match possible. But we also have programs like we can do a foster to adopt. So maybe you don't have all your members, oh, let's do it as a foster to adopt. Let's see how it goes. Let's let's try to support. Because sometimes people don't really know exactly, you know, if it's going to be a good fit either. And they might feel badly if they adopt and then they have to make a decision to return. So we we find alternatives for them. But yes, it is much different than it was back in two thousand and seventeen.
So and the last time I went to, and you know, with COVID, I haven't been able to go there, but the last time that I went, I was told that unless I fill out that paperwork that says I'm I'm looking to adopt, that I couldn't even look at the animals. And I got to tell you, I I'm the person who, and I've done this twice before, gone in and ended up adopting two animals a couple of times. And and, you know, a couple of years ago, I went to ARF just to look at an animal without an appointment there. They allowed me to look at it. And I ended up leaving with with that dog. So wouldn't it help to allow people to come in and look and fall in love with that, that puppy dog looking at them in the eyes or hold that that cat and say, oh, my gosh, this one just is exactly what I wanted? Instead of telling them that you can adopt it, but you can't have any interaction with it.
Yeah, no, again, I think you'd find that things are really a lot different. You know, the 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 philosophy is that you might come and look to visit today and maybe you're not going to adopt. But it will set a impact in you to think about adoption for the future. So I don't care whether you adopt today or or five years from now. I I care that you have a good experience, right? I care that you have a fun interaction with an animal or animals that you want to do. I think the, you know, the the challenge that we have compared to ARF is that ARF goes out and they pick and choose the animals that they get to bring into their shelter. So they have animals that are cute, not cuter, a lot more visibly adoptable that some people might think of. And they have been behaviorally tested. A lot of our animals that they go through. A lot of our animals that they go through, we have to have a little bit more restrictions because some of our dogs and some of our cats are not necessarily, you know, at that time ready for adoption, and it might be too stressful for them. So we do have to, we have a slightly different process just because we want to keep the animals happy and healthy as well as we want to keep the people safe. Because we don't want to have an animal have a bite or something like that 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 has a bad negative mark on them. So we do have to have some sort of a different balance than an agency like ARF. But our goal is the same that you mentioned.
But your website says that that while that if you don't have an appointment going in there for a meet and greet, that there'll be no physical interaction prior to adoption.
The the reason that is is right now due to COVID. So we have a lot of regulations and limitations in regards to interactions with people and some of our volunteers which are doing adoptions are seniors. And we have limitations on what they can and cannot do with members of the public. So I I think as we things move forward, you'll see those things shift again. But prior to COVID, things had opened up where, I mean, we had people coming in, you know, doing reading sessions with animals. We had people just coming and sitting and spending time with them. We do doggy day out adventures even now, where you could come in and you could take spot out for an adventure. You don't have to adopt them. Just take come in and sign up and take them out for an adventure. Take them out to get a pupchino, you know, take them out to Stinson Beach. Let him get his feet wet, you know? So that that is a lot different than it ever was before.
And in the new service agreement, it states the county animal shelter will be open thirty hours a week to residents. Yet only nineteen of those hours are available for meet and greets with cats and kittens. And of those same nineteen hours, only twelve of them are available for people looking to adopt a dog or puppy. Why why such a limitation?
So again, some of that goes back to staffing limitations and for a multitude of reasons. So as an example, an adoption only takes about an hour. Okay, so if we if our if our lobby is supposed to close at five, we can't start an adoption at four fifty, right? So we we have to have some sort of limitations that we also have. You know, again, we've had to reduce our staff. So we have situations where we may not have adequate staffing to be able to perform the 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 financial closing of an adoption. So we have to monitor that. So we're 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 working to do our best to be able to expand on that and make it where it's a sort of more streamlined process. And so I think you would find that I mean, most of the people I hear from, I don't hear that they are having a problem getting an animal adopted. It's more like there's just a the process is sped up, but there's not an adequate selection is what I hear.
Yeah, I'm. I was looking at that, and there are, well, there's seventy four cats and kittens, but only eighteen of those are adoptable. And the and of those, I want to say two thirds of the the kittens are between the ages of five and and eight weeks. And the dogs, I think sixty of the dogs were adoptable, with about five of them out at foster right now. Um, let me see. Now, on average, how long do you think it should take to out to answer the the phone in Martinez?
To answer the phone?
Yeah.
I would say it depends on the time of day, but I would say probably within ten minutes.
Okay, because I I I got on the phone today to to contact down there, and there was a ninety second message before it even allowed me to go to the next step.
Right.
And then it transferred me to a holding queue when I sat on there for forty minutes. So that was that was a little frustrating as well. So it it I don't know if that's something you can look at to for increasing. Even if you had a volunteer at the phone.
Yeah.
All right, I I think that is all that I have. Thank you for your time. And is there any follow up questions from council members? Nope. So at this point, if there are no other questions, then I will now open it for public comment.
I received no written public comments on this item. If you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature. I'll call your name if provided and unmute you to speak. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. And I'm seeing no hands raised.
Okay, with no speakers, I will close public comment. Is there any other council discussion? Councilmember Meyer?
I just wanted to say thank you again for the presentation. I am happy about the reconciliation of service numbers. That's not taking place just yet, right? Like in the application of charges to the next year?
That the first time it will happen is in fiscal year twenty two, twenty three, at the end of fiscal year.
Okay. Great. And then this this is just for the public. I would like to everyone to like think of stubby the turkey. Given this conversation, it's kind of a good time to mention that we lost stubby the turkey, the mascot of Station Fifty Two over on Balfour by Walgreens, and and I think a lot of us are going to mourn his passing. I heard that he was hit by a car anyway.
That's horrible.
It is horrible.
I I I I every day I drive by him and say hello. I'm sorry to hear that. Very sorry.
Yeah, me too. Thank you.
Okay. If if there are no other questions or comments, I'll now take a motion on the resolution.
As detailed in the staff report, adopt a resolution approving the city county animal service agreement.
Second.
All right, with that, council roll call.
Councilmember Rary. If maybe for the vote, I just want to confirm with the maker of the motion and the second that the the agreement in question is the one that was revised and provided to the council last Friday and is amended in the packet.
It does that if it's amended in the packet, then yes.
Yes, and that that's what it was. It was the amended one that was that was given. Just want to confirm that was the case, and I'm seeing nodding heads. So thank you very much.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Hi.
Motion carries with Vice Mayor Rodriguez and I'm absent.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to D dot two, resolution approving the information technology master plan. The and information systems manager Mike Baria will present it.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay? And is Scott Sanders from SDI also present? Let's make sure there he is. All right. Well, good evening, council members. My name is Mike Baria. I'm the chief information systems officer for the city. Tonight, I'd like to present for your approval the city's information technology master plan. As outlined in the staff report, one of the initiatives identified within the city's two year strategic plan with the goal of finding ways to increase operational efficiency through the use of technology was the development of an information technology master plan or ITMP. In two thousand and twenty, staff released an RFP for the development of the ITMP. As a result of the RFP process, staff brought forward a recommendation to council to move forward with SDI presence as the consultant selected to help with the development of the ITMP. Throughout two thousand and twenty one and with council's approval, various industry professionals from SDI's team met and worked with city staff, collected information, and ultimately developed the city's ITMP. Joining us tonight is Scott Sanders from SDI Presence to give a presentation that briefly outlines SDI's process for the development of the ITMP and highlights some of the key findings and outcomes presented within the ITMP. At the end of Scott's presentation, Scott will provide an opportunity for council to ask questions, and Scott and I will be able to answer questions at that time. And with that, I will hand it over to Scott.
Good evening, and thank you for the invitation and introduction, Mike. As I mentioned, my name is Scott Sanders. I represent SDI Presence and am the director of operations for Northern California. Council, I want to thank you, Carrie, Christine, and Mike for selecting SDI as the city's partner for this project. And for tonight's presentation, we do hope to highlight some of the important findings and recommendations that came out of this process. Of course, the full detail is available in your agenda packet. But we hope to be brief with only about eight slides. And as Mike said, we'll provide an opportunity for questions at the end. So the real process, the overall goal of the city's IT master plan is to help guide the development and investments needed to proactively manage the technology gap that develops over time. And specifically, the projects that make the best sense for Brentwood in order to make the best use of technology and improve the efficiency of its employees and processes. The IT master plan is designed to address new demand, the industry trends, and citizen services that are requested. And the horizon we look at for a technology master plan is really three to five years. Now, I won't spend a lot of time on this slide, but I do want to highlight that you know, all of the different activities that we undertake as part of this project are really meant to invite and solicit participation from all levels of the organization. Whether that's reviewing the council's strategic goals and objectives, the budgets, the priorities, the work that's already in progress. Our methodology is really to solicit input from all of those levels. And part of our approach includes an evaluation of conformance to best practices. And it really helps to establish where the information services team is today and highlight the areas that need additional investment preparing the city for the future. Now, the results that we see for Brentwood are very common to most of our clients, especially for the first time an IT master plan is developed. I'd like to highlight that the additional investments detailed in the plan as the city implements them over the next few years, you will see significant additional investments and and I'm sorry, additional improvements across all of the dimensions that that are measured. On the left side there, you see how we kind of break down whether the environment is frontier, reactive, proactive, or if it's really aligned with the city's overall goals and objectives. And on the right side there, I want to highlight that, you know, these results are very typical of our clients as we come in and do the conformance to best practices evaluation. And as I said, as those additional investments are made over time, each of those dimensions will improve. At the very bottom of the right side there, you can see that the city today is very near the average of all of our clients. And while that's the case, I think it's appropriate at this point to highlight that the survey that the city employees and executive team participated in highlighted the fact that over ninety percent of the employee population is extremely satisfied with the work that Mike and his team are doing. So great job on that. Now, in the full plan, of course, there are almost forty different recommendations developed across four specific areas. And I know that the work to implement those recommendations has already started, in some cases has already completed. But for tonight, here's a list of recommendations that are worth mentioning. I know Mike, Christine, and Carrie will be working the full list of recommendations based on the priorities established by the city's IT Governance Committee. It's worth noting that these projects are really focused internally towards city operations, focusing on the people, process, and technology initiatives really intended to address efficiency and the technology gap that we mentioned earlier. Now, several of these are already in progress, as I mentioned. Some of them will be starting soon. I know that the the post implementation review, I think that has already started on one solution, and it's going to start with Minute Track and RIMS very soon. Adopting a formal governance approach is also underway. I think Mike has shared that the next meeting is going to be scheduled for July, so it's just right around the corner. And you know, that consensus driven process is really important, and it's a critical success factor for any organization as it continues to make investments in technology. Developing a formal application portfolio helps establish the city's assets and prepare for their maintenance and eventual replacement in due course. Reorganizing the IS division so that supervisory positions are created and a stronger focus on IT service management can be created. And I believe, you know, there are some some changes in the upcoming budget year that help start that process. Developing a plan to better share information across all of the applications help reduce the silos that we see in in so many of the city's applications, that's critical. You know, instead of having to find the one person that has the right answer, you know, better information sharing will make everybody more efficient. Moving to developing and documenting a man a management, a document management framework and citywide laser fish implementation, all of those are really meant to drive efficiency and and better business operations. Finally, implementing an application training program so that every employee has the knowledge and experience necessary to be efficient with the applications that are in use today. So those are just about nine of the forty different recommendations that came out of the process. And this is a bit of an eye chart again. It's really just meant to be representative of the results from the project prioritization workshop that you know, was conducted and facilitated towards the end of the project. It's a bit hard to see here in this format, but all of the details are, of course, included in the IT master plan, which is in your packet. And finally, here's a quick list of upcoming projects. Again, the detail is located, starting on page ten of our report. I think that's page six thirty one of the agenda packet, so pretty lengthy packet for you all, but the deep detail is there. And it's worth mentioning that although it has a low cost to implement, I do think a formal approach to IT governance is one of your most critical success factors. No city has unlimited resources, and a consensus driven approach to governance will help ensure that the IS staff have clear priorities and the funding necessary to accomplish the city's priority projects. Now, both the council chambers audio visual upgrade and the access control management system upgrade, I know both of those are two of the more expensive projects in the plan. And you know, development of a formal cybersecurity and business continuity plans are also underway, but you know, implementation of those plans, once they're created, those will also come with some not insignificant cost. So that's a quick run through. It's been a pleasure to work with the city over the past year or so since since we got started. I know Mike has had challenges like every local government organization that, you know, we serve as our clients. But I'm really happy that the development of this plan was really driven on a consensus basis with the inclusion of all of the city's executive team. The IS team has been fantastic to work with, Carrie, Christine, Mike, thank you guys very much. And I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. And I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that may come up.
All right. If you have any clarifying questions in staff, please raise your hand. I will call you on you in order for staff to respond. Councilmember Mendoza.
My, thank you so much for your presentation. I appreciate it. My first question is one of the most often asked questions from our residents is when are we going to be back in chambers? So when do we think this project is going to be done?
Yeah, that's a good question. So we received, we did an RFP and selected a contractor for this already. We did designs and pretty much after the kickoff, about the time we started ordering some of the equipment, we realized that supply chain issues were just, were, were huge. We were seeing, you know, like ten, twenty, ten, twenty week lead times on some equipment. So we're currently estimating late fall, when the project will begin. And I, if we could time it right, you know, I'd like to say that we'd be in council chambers again next year, but, or by January. But I can't say that for sure. It really depends on when that equipment arrives. And that's just, that's a moving target. It's a tough one to nail down right now. And we're seeing it in other projects as well. I would say that it's possible, we, you know, there's a chance we could, depending on COVID, depending on other factors, we could go in sooner. The council chambers are functioning now, but they're not refreshed yet. So though, there will be a break when we do that construction of the refresh.
Okay, thank you. My next question, I'm on page six thirty-six of the agenda. I PDF did a couple of days ago, so I hope it's the same page, but I'm looking at stakeholder interviews. One of the things that I think is missing here is residents. Why didn't we include residents, especially when so many things are customer-facing? For example, the website. Why didn't we ask them to test anything and to give us their feedback?
Well, thank you, Councilmember, for that question. Our normal methodology is really focused internally to the city organization. In the four years I've been with SDI, I can't think of a single IT strategic plan that sought public input. Our methodology and approach is really geared towards taking the city council's goals and objectives, aligning them with, you know, the work that's already underway. New legislation, you know, new requirements. And so in, in many, I guess in one respect, we do fold in public interest and public concern because it comes through the city council itself. So you're in
For that, if that was my next question, like no one on the city council gave feedback. And like during, like we weren't, I mean, I was never asked about the website. I'm and I don't know if this is the time we talk, I'm disappointed with it. I find it very clunky. So I just, I wish we would have added customer-facing, I mean, customers to things that were going to be customer-facing. I think that was a big miss on our part. Honestly, so I just was wondering if it's just, I guess it's standard practice that we don't. The other thing is, when it comes to new projects, and this is development projects, we used to have the one-pagers that used to have like the timeline across. And we were told that it would be part of the IT update. I don't see that anywhere. Where does that live, this new timeline that we're going to have for projects? Development projects, whether they're residential or commercial. Because we kept talking about our one-pagers and we get, you know, this is even before I was elected. We were told, hold off, it's going to be part of the IT update.
I can't speak to historical way that it might have been handled. But as we mentioned, the IT governance process is really meant to bring all of the stakeholders together within the city, executive team and others to really talk about the initiatives. Those come to the Governance Committee through either council goals and objectives, the strategic plan. And then ultimately, based on the discussions and decisions made at the Governance Committee level, those projects are approved and scheduled accordingly. So that's normally the process that we encourage our clients to go through.
So I guess my question is, is now that we're sitting here, we've been told time and time again, this was going to be part of the IT update. So at what point can we get, like, do we have to vote on it again? I mean, I don't know what we have to do, but it, that's another big miss. Because we've been told time and time again, that was part of the project.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Because I was waiting on this.
Councilmember Mendoza, can I just ask a question to clarify? So you're asking for like a website page for all new development projects, like a single page for each project?
And it doesn't even have to be a single page, just like there is, there on the old one-pagers, there was the different phases that a project would go through. And then you could click, you know, they click on it to get the project page and click on it to get different stuff, right? And so we were told that that was going to be a page on our new site. So they wanted to do away with the one-pagers because they were too hard to maintain.
Okay, I will make sure that we get out a response to the council that says you have an update, and then maybe even the next council meeting is part of the city manager's update. Because I know this is a question that residents have, so thank you. I do not know the status of it, but I will make sure that we get a response to.
And I would agree with what she has to say because it's, we had these great one-page, I mean, you click on a thing and it opens up all of of just that project. Now we have a, yeah, for an Excel that it's not really user-friendly.
And the Excel, we were told the Excel was an interim until this was up. It was just a fill, it's just to fill the gap. It wasn't the permanent. So we were like, okay, we'll take that as a, a gap filler, but, okay. So here's my question about the website. I still think that has a long way to go. An example is if I do the search bar, like for example, GIS map. The GIS map's not coming up, but if I go out to Google and do a search for the GIS map, the GIS map comes up in Google. So there is something going on with the search on the website we need to fix because I can never find anything directly from the website. The other thing is that, and I've mentioned this to Tim on various occasions, the number one ask from residents was the quick links, and we had the quick links. The quick links that are missing would be like the homeless one, the development one. Now I have to go in like four or five, six deep to get the development one. But if we could find a way, and I know you guys have the circles on the front page, I don't know if we can add more circles, you know, the little dots that have agenda. I don't know what we can do, but there's things that our residents really, really want. And again, it, this is a tool for them. It's not a tool for us necessarily. So let's find a way to add more quick links, I would hope, please. And then if there's any way to do analytics around the visits to the old sites, what the, what were the most visited pages on the old site? I think it's probably, you know, the homeless, the police, the the development page, like if there's anything else that you saw custom residents clicking on more often, let's make it easy for them, Mike, right? Things shouldn't, we all know that once you click two to three times, people fall off and they're like, forget it. I don't want to see, oh, see it. Oh, the other one is the twenty-four-seven. If we could have the twenty-four-seven as a quick link because people use that. I get a lot of calls about, how do I get someone to look at this? And how do I get someone to look at that? And they have to, it's a lot, it's a lot of clicks deep. So if we could just put it on the website and say, go to the homepage twenty-four-seven. So those were my questions right now. I think we can have discussion later. So, thank you, Scott and Michael.
And I've taken note of some of the things that you recommended, and we'll, we'll definitely look at those and, and see if we can get those addressed.
If there are no other questions from council, I will now open it up for public comment.
I'll go ahead and share the speaker screen. I currently have two hands raised. I received no written public comments on this item. If you wish to wait speak on this item, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature. I'll call your name if provided and mute you to speak. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. I'll call on Danny Dorman, followed by Rod. Danny, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I only have three minutes, so let me just rattle it off here. It looks like this work is to play catch-up, to bring us, I guess, up to some minimum standard. I thought we were also going to talk about forward-thinking things like the Innovation Center and things along those lines, but it looks like you have to build the shell before you can even get into that. Unless I'm reading this incorrectly, and the challenge is, if we have to wait for that, if we can't do two tracks, we're gonna be stuck for a while. I agree with Councilwoman Mendoza. We are stakeholders. I can't speak for any other town, any other city, but we are stakeholders. And even though the council represents us, if I heard correctly, the council wasn't involved. So they either missed the meeting or they weren't invited. In either case, I think personally stakeholders should include members of the public. I've been doing this for way too many years. And I've seen setups such as this, and this looks like it's going to be a slow starter, slow burner, and in the interim, we're going to have to wait and be placed on hold and possibly lose businesses that are heavily in the realm of IT. And now with this in mind, and I probably didn't get ready to answer my own question, I don't see anything about hardening with this. This basically looks like a patch job. Yeah, you're migrating over to some things, but it still looks more like a patch job instead of true hardening. So is that something that's going to be discussed later on? Was it even considered? And when will, or yeah, will we see anything net new? Again, it looks like we're trying to bring us up to a standard that we are lagging behind, but yeah, life goes on. And if we have to wait, then maybe we need to reconsider the priorities of this master plan. And then lastly, on page, let's see, page six forty-seven, under benefits, you don't have a check mark on enable the city to approve the alignment of IT direction and priorities with the city's business priorities. Why was that, oh, not counted?
Thank you. The next speaker is Rod. Rod, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Margaret. Yeah, I want to say first off, I'm really excited to see the AV updates, the, the new cameras, the new audio, everything. See how that's going to look. So disappointed we're having to wait until fall, but these things happen, but that, that should be really great when we get back in because the, the old cameras are terrible. What's also terrible is the, the video widget, I, I QM two site. It's difficult to move around in the videos or find a spot or get a timestamp. We've actually taken at the Alliance. We, we've taken to reposting all the videos of the council meetings. On YouTube, we have our own page on YouTube, and we do that just so that we can make it easier for people to find things. YouTube gives you, it has a feature where you can share a video at a timestamp. So a person, when they click the link, it starts up the video at the point where you want them to see it, which is helpful when you have three-hour council meetings. The development project pages, that's a, that's a sorely missed thing for us in the community that, that kind of do the, the planning activism that we've been doing. You might not have seen a lot of hits on those pages, but the people that were looking at them were finding information to go out and share with the community through social media. And so not having that resource makes, makes things more difficult for us. We really used to appreciate that, and we certainly hope we can get it back. The, the campaign finance widget where, where you're showing all of the finance forms is terrible. And by terrible, I mean, it's difficult to find anything. And when you can find it, you can't share it by a link because everything's a JavaScript and there is no direct link to any of the documents, which is almost criminal. We, we should be able to share an interesting campaign finance statement when we find one. And we cannot, we have to, we have to download it and share the PDF on social media, which is not good. Other than that, the, the, the new website does have a nice look to it. I understand where you're going with it. There's still a lot of discoverability issues. People have trouble finding things. You're, you're hearing a lot of that tonight, and so I would encourage you to keep, keep taking public input, making changes. I did notice that it is possible for people to rapidly update a page if it's not correct. I saw a page earlier tonight that was not correct, and by the time I went back and hit refresh, it was. So that happened pretty quick. Kudos to you there. I know the security stuff, another caller was mentioning, you're not going to see, he's not going to ever see what you're doing behind the scenes, and I know how tough that stuff is. So thank you all for doing all of that, and thank you for doing a good job, and we're looking for great things. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Antonio Xavier. Mr. Xavier, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to follow up on the previous comments. This is an active and involved community. We like to keep tabs and stay aware of what the city is doing. And I don't have any specific recommendations. I just want to talk at a high level. We like tools that will help us with transparency in government. That's a big deal for the citizens here in Brentwood. The previous comments about one-page tracking and timestamp sharing videos, it all has that common theme, transparency in government. So that the citizens of residents can be involved and, and follow along with what is happening. So just want to touch base and say that is very important, and add my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional hands raised.
Before we move on to council discussion, Mike, is there any comments or response to any of the questions asked by the public?
No, we've, I've made notes of most of them. I know, like, for example, we are live streaming on YouTube as well. Or at least been exploring that pretty actively because I QM two can be challenging at times, but hopefully, you know, when we go to the to the new video format, you know, things will improve there. But other than that, I took a lot of notes about the transparency. That was a common theme, and, and we'll see if I can integrate that into any future updates we do to the website.
And I did have a follow-up question for you, or a question for you. So I know how fast IT changes. How much, how much in the future are we looking at? Are we are we doing a catch-up right now, or have we looked to the future and said we need to do this because this is our destination? And so that we're not constantly having to replace things in order to get to that next place in the future?
Yeah, it's a little bit of both, I would say. You know, we, we wanted to take a look at the way we were doing IT, if that's even a proper phrase, doing IT. We wanted to see how we were, how we were conducting ourselves in IT and whether or not that, you know, one of the, I think one of the struggles that probably any organization sees in IT is finding that balance between helping people from, you know, where they're at with what they have, and then also helping them move to new and, you know, better and more efficient ways of doing things. Above all of that, you also have security issues that you need to consider. Then you add to that some of the new dynamics, like working from home, the technologies that allow you to do those types of things better or not, right? And keeping the network secure. So there's a lot of challenges that we face. And I think, you know, talking to my colleagues in other cities, I think one of the common challenges I hear is, you know, you're always, I think everybody's shown some acknowledgement of this, that the IT departments are a lot of times just trying to play catch-up. They're trying to trying to, you know, meet the needs of their customers and bring in technology that helps the business you know, conduct their business more efficiently. And it, it's just a challenge. You want to get out of that reactive mode? I think that's something we've said in my ten-plus years here at the city. I think that's one thing we've always been saying in IT is, how do we get out of reactive mode into proactive mode? And that's what we're trying to do with this master plan. I think that's one of the things that helped us do is it, you know, when you look through the plan and you see some of the things that it helps us do, especially the IT governance portion, that's You know, when you look through the plan and you see some of the things that it helps us do, especially the IT governance portion, agility is, I think, a theme that like a. Um, something that we want to be able to say about ourselves, that we are agile, that we can adapt to whatever the environment uh allows and I think. Or requires and I think that, you know, you'll see that like in our security, the way we're approaching security, the way we're gonna approach business continuity, the way we're approaching cloud computing. Um, a lot of those things and, and uh, you know, try to create a foundation that allows us to be more agile. To respond to different things. So our new website, um, you know, there's, there, it is easier to update than the last one, that's for sure. Um, there are, you know, the buttons like we talked about on the front screen, we can change them at any time. We can change them whatever you want. It takes minutes. You know, we've got uh other things that we're also trying to, to consider when we look at our website, you know, uh, accessibility. Uh, transparency. So yeah, there's a number of things that we're trying to do. I think, I don't know if I'm quite answering your question, but I think that that. From what I hear you're asked, I, I think I even heard one of the public mention something similar is, are we looking forward or are we just trying to play catch-up and. We're, we're trying to balance, find the balance between both, but our ultimate goal is to be able to be in a position where we constantly look forward.
And, and I'm sorry, maybe it's been said already, but is this a living document where as, as you proceed in time? That things can be added into it and or, or is this something that, okay? This is what we're doing for the next five to ten or five years and, and then we're gonna redo it again in five years.
I think that's a great question. Um, you know, we do want the technology master plan to be a living document that is updated. By, you know, every time the, the governance committee meets and projects are shuffled or new projects are added. You know, completed, taken off the list, uh, they should be, uh, you know, updating that plan. We. The, the worst thing is to invest the money and the time that goes into. Developing a master plan like this and then just, you know, gathering dust on a bookshelf. So that's not anybody's intent. Uh, the city has all of the materials and with the, you know, focus on the, the governance process. And how we kind of build some rigor into, um, you know, reviewing those projects, the progress, the funding, the priorities. All of that will enable the city to be more agile, like Mike said.
Okay, um, alright, so, and I, I, I forgot to, to, to close public comment. Um, and so is there any council discussion at this time? I see um Councilmember Mendoza has her hand up.
Yeah, I guess, um, not much discussions are made the comments and, um, Michael took great notes, but so my question is. I don't know if I feel comfortable adopting the resolution without knowing. That those, because those were really important projects to me without knowing where those stand. Is this something we can wait on? Or do we have to do that tonight? Then, um, Damian, anyone?
Well, uh, there's no requirement to council adopts this tonight. Um, as I understand it though. The master plan doesn't go into as much detail about, I think a lot of your comments this evening, Councilmember Mendoza have been about the website in particular. And I don't think it goes into as much detail about the website as, as that's, it's in there, certainly referenced in there. But I don't know if it goes in that much specificity. Um, so it would seem you can adopt this still, um, and then staff would move forward with it.
The pretty, the permit one should, I think should have its own line because from what Alexis said, that's a pretty big project. And then, um, the permitting one and the pages, like I think the pages is not just the website, the pages is also another. Big project. So I, I feel uncomfortable approving it with two big projects not listed and not knowing where those stand. Um, and the other reason I'm saying this is because I'm asking for things that, you know, I was told by someone that. They couldn't update any of the buttons on the homepage, but now I'm hearing that we can't update the buttons on the homepage. So I think that there's um some confusion and I think we need to get that cleared up before I were to approve a resolution on this one.
But that's certainly a prerogative. There's no requirement that you adopt this tonight. As far as I, I'll ask Mr. Barry, I want to make sure I'm not missing anything, but I don't believe there's any requirement that this is adopted tonight.
I think everything else is great. It's just those couple, those really concern me because those are the ones that I would use the most before I was elected and people call me a lot about, so.
And I, I would just reemphasize Damian's point too, that the, the plan is, is fairly general. So when it talks about the, I won't say general. It's specific in the, the categories that it's chosen, but when it gets into the, the weeds of exactly how certain things are being implemented, like. The development page you spoke of, um, you know, those are, the, our goal was to put in. A site that allows us to potentially do those things, but whether or not we do those things weren't, aren't specifically outlined in the plan, it sounds like you're asking that those be added. To the plan.
Yeah, I mean, well, not even added because we've talked, I've talked about these things to Tim on several occasions. So it's. To me, it's not new. I think to you it might be new, but I've had these conversations.
So, uh, I think it's more to the point that it's, you know. Uh, accepting this plan doesn't mean that those things aren't going to be done, aren't gonna be our focus. They would be our focus. The plan is to make sure that we have a website foundationally that allows us to make some of those changes.
Can I break in for a moment, Councilmember, and, and maybe suggest an agenda item? Um, to get an update on these items specifically for the website, because I was gonna bring up a few myself that I've already mentioned and not seeing any activity on. So maybe we approve the resolution and then make an agenda item for.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable with approving the resolution tonight.
Okay.
And given that any actions you take tonight will require three votes, um, that pretty much. We'll, we'll not move this forward this evening. Um, but certainly. Uh, staff, I would think could come back with, with updates as requested, either on, on agenda or at least as an off agenda memo to start with on, on what's going on with that. Um, and then, you know, some of it might not necessarily be appropriate for the plan, just because it is, it's in such details that you're looking for. But certainly an update might then give you comfort on being able to move forward and approving the plan. Other areas may, may be appropriate to put in the plan. Not my, not my area of expertise. I'll leave that to the, the technology folks. Um, but just trying to give you some options of, of how you can move forward.
I guess it's, I don't even, I mean, those, the permit one and the development one are really big. I would think that. That would be very clear on where they sit and I don't see, like I see finance, HR, city clerk. You know, uh, parks, public, I don't see anything under community, you know, development, economic development, nothing. So I don't know where those would sit and from what I remember, those are gonna be pretty big projects. So that's my concern. I want to talk to Tim when he gets back and have more discussion on where we missed.
Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you. Um, my, mine kind of goes back to the callers and their comments about transparency in government and communications and engagement. Um, and, and one of the things that I get asked about a lot is when certain things are coming to agendas. And so I find myself on a very regular basis, sharing with people how to sign up for notifications. And I don't see anything on the page. If, if you click on the agendas, it goes to the agendas page, but it doesn't. Talk about notifications and signing up for them. So one of the things that I had asked for that I'm not seeing yet. Is a button that talks about um, uh, notifications and newsletter. Because I think they can be lumped together. They are lumped together on the bottom where you see, uh, subscribing, you add your email address and submit. It doesn't say, it doesn't clarify what you're, um, subscribing to. It could be the newsletter. It could be a series of notifications. When you click on that. It actually brings all those things up. So I think we need to be a little bit more clear for the sake of residents understanding, how do I get notified about what I'm interested in? I would like to see a button at the top that talks about notifications and newsletters and it can be the same button, like I said, if it's. You know, specifically notifications and newsletters. So I think that's kind of important. Um, I would definitely agree about the twenty-four seven because that's another one I get a lot of calls on myself too. Um, and the how do I, I, I used to really like that, how do I click down with all of the different things that, that, you know. Gets you there a little bit more directly. Um, and then language, when it comes to. The accessibility. Do we have, and I'm, I'm trying to remember, I thought this was something we had discussed, translation ability? And if so, that doesn't appear to be obvious on the, on the, um, main page either.
I think it's down at the bottom. If I remember right.
I'm not seeing it. So, and I think if there is, uh, the language translation ability, then it should be in Spanish, of course. So people know what they're clicking on if they only speak Spanish, but I don't, I don't see it on here. So just additional notes.
I think it's gone. I think it was there and it was multiple languages, not just Spanish, like you could.
I thought I'd seen it. I don't, I don't see it on here now.
And it was multiple languages, accessibility statement? No.
That's what I looked at initially and I don't, it's not on that.
Yeah. So I myself look at this as a high-level document. Um, I was glad, while, while we are users of the website, um. The end users or as my husband calls them in his customers. Are the staff who, who utilize the products in here. So I was glad that they went to staff to determine. What their needs are within their departments. Um, I like the idea of finally having SharePoint. Um, I've worked with SharePoint in the past. I, I think it. Is a wonderful tool. Um, the DocuSign is another thing that, um, being able to. Move documents along, uh, with the DocuSign is, is huge. Um, I, I think maybe we, I, I, I know you don't want to approve this, but. Maybe we approve this and bring back the website. As, as an agenda item to discuss the things that we want to do to the website that aren't there or. Um.
No, I want to talk to Tim first because this, some of these statements are contradictory to what he specifically said to me, so I want to talk to Tim. And understand it.
Okay.
Sorry, Michael, it's not you at all. Not you at all. It's not you. Um, great. I just want to make sure that I understand where my items that I'm asking for live on, because I printed it out and I looked for it. I just want to understand where they live on here, like what bucket it's in, it's in.
Okay, so is there any other council discussion? No, so, uh, if there's no other questions or comments, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we do not pass a resolution tonight, but that, um, we have follow-up city manager. And move.
Continue this item?
Yeah, so I'm sorry.
And then a couple of ways to proceed. One would be to see if there was any motion on it. If not, then the matter would not move forward at all. The other would be, as you just suggested, to continue the item to a future meeting, uh, for further discussion.
Yes, continue the item to a future meeting for future, for further discussion.
Uh, roll call vote.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Yes.
Motion carries with Vice Mayor Rodriguez and Mayor Bryant absent.
Okay, D three, review draft language and maps related to the proposed council-sponsored ballot initiative to protect open space. And recreational areas and provide staff with recommendations and directions regarding the proposed ballot initiative. Assistant City Manager Darren Gale will present this item.
Damian, I'm gonna pull up PowerPoint real quick. Great, thank you, uh, Councilmember, uh, Rary and, uh, members of the city council. I'm excited to be before you this evening to talk about. Um, the current status of the open space and park protection land use measure. A, a brief overview, um. Uh, this evening that the items will be going over. Once again, I'll go over the council goals, ballot initiative histories, a little bit about the procedures, where we've, uh. Where we are today, the work that's been, uh, done, uh, the option that we're considering, some staff recommendations. And then go to a public comment and, and council discussion and recommendations. As, uh, we've mentioned, uh, before, I've gone over this, uh, this slide, uh, the last two city council meetings. But just wanted to, to make sure the residents understand what the stated goals of this ballot measure was or is. Uh, one is to try to protect from future state mandates. We've had discussions about what it can and cannot do. Uh, to protect open space and parks, uh, to possibly model it after the Martinez measure, uh, to protect, uh. Certain closed or the golf courses from future developments. Uh, and one of the key goals is to ensure this project is on the November. Uh, twenty twenty-two ballot, uh, protect properties from future council actions, so require. A vote of residents for any type of change to these specific properties and to hire an outside co- council with environmental and election law experience. Uh, this list is in, uh, no specific order, but, uh, it is, they are the stated goals, uh, today. A little bit about land use procedures. And, uh, the, or the initiative procedures and the history. Uh, in the nineteen seventy, uh, these type of measure, measures actually became. Uh, disfavored after several initiatives, uh, establishing growth caps were found to violate state law. Uh, however, in, uh, nineteen ninety, measure J was enacted. Uh, which amended the Napa County General Plan to ensure that designated. Uh, lands cannot be redesignated and made available for more intensive development without a vote of the people. Uh, Davita versus Napa, um, is a landmark, uh, Supreme Court decision. Where they sued on almost each item that was in, uh, measure J, um, and basically upheld that and as a result. Uh, since the California Supreme Court decision in Davita, three general categories of general plan land use initiatives have emerged. Uh, so first is subsequent voter approval, uh, which would lock in existing general plan policy and land use, uh, designations. A second is the urban growth boundary, which that initiative establishes a line beyond which residents of a city are given a vote on. Whether that city will be able to expand beyond the urban growth boundary. And then the third is, uh, the one that, so this, the, 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 the city council. Is pursuing, which is an overlay initiative. Uh, it's an option, it's a very, it's really a variation of Napa's measure J. And this is the option being pursued this evening and is preferred where the existing general plan is considered insufficient. To protect a certain type of uses. Uh, this type of initiative proposes an overlay that places additional restrictions on protected lands. So, um. Land use, uh, um, initiative procedures, there's, there's three different type of land use initiative procedures. One is, uh, where residents or voters sponsored, which would mean that residents draft a measure. They collect enough sig- signatures, they bring that to the city council and the council places that on the ballot. A SEQA applies differently to voter-sponsored initiative and council-sponsored initiatives. So, uh, SEQA compliance is not required before a city, um, submits a voter-sponsored initiative to the voters. Um, it's also not required if, uh, that same process occurred and then the city council actually adopted. Uh, that measure versus having to go out for, for a vote. Uh, the third one is a council-sponsored initiative, which is what we're. Uh, to, discussing this evening and that being placed on the ballot and that is not exempt from SEQA and it does require. Uh, this will require some type of SEQA analysis. I mentioned this because. Uh, with the timeframe of going to the November twenty twenty-two ballot initiative, we need to be very careful. To ensure that we don't trigger any type of significant SEQA review and so a council sponsor review, well. Is, uh, we have to go through the SEQA process. Um, some additional background, the state has broad powers to preempt, uh, local laws that affect housing, especially in general law cities like Brentwood. That includes the power to preempt land use laws adopted in a ballot initiative. Uh, a local ballot initiative will not insulate Brentwood from future state interference. If the legislature is determined to pre- preamps a local authority and as the council members discussed, that is a, a common theme. Uh, at the state legislature. In the past year, several courts have struck down portions of ballot initiatives that conflict with SB three thirty, including Antioch. Uh, and those decisions affirmed that land use initiatives that effectively, effectively downzone parcels. Without providing for concurrent upzoning faces strong risk of, uh, preemption. Uh, and, uh, finally is, uh, additional background related to the Planning Commission. Uh, while the Planning Commission is typically the first stop in a city council's approval of amendments to the general plan. Per the state planning and zoning law, case law has clarified that voter-sponsored initiatives are not required to follow the same process. Ultimately, in that context, it is the voters who are amending the general plan and not the city council. So this item. Uh, is, will not be going before this, uh, the Planning Commission for review. So this item, uh, is, will not be going before this, uh, the Planning Commission for review, as a result of that, and also, uh, due to timing. So, a little bit of work today, um, as we've mentioned in the past, we did meet with Mr. Floran Community members a couple of times. Uh, we've hired, um, outside, uh, council, which we're very, uh, happy to have Catherine Ingberg. With Shoot, Malay and, and Weinberger. Uh, Ms. Hamburg is experienced in environmental election law, has worked on a number of ballot measures, and we love, and we're lucky to have her. At her firm assisting us on this project, and she is here this evening to help the city council. And, uh, to add, answer any questions that, uh, that might come up. And, um. Uh, we've also reviewed the citizen drafted, uh, measure and, and came up with some recommendations that we could not make that work. Uh, based upon the requirement of the November twenty twenty-two. Uh, ballot, uh, we provided three options for the city council. And we've had two council meetings since where the council's provided direction, where you've, uh, put, taken us to, uh, to this point. Where we hope, and I shouldn't say we hope, we know that we'll have a, a robust, uh, uh, discussion. So based upon, uh, the council's discussion, we are moving forward or, or, uh, discussing a new overlay. A new overlay that would be based upon existing general plan, uh, language and, and designations. Uh, we know that, uh, we believe that this will, uh. We can perform the SEQA analysis in a timely manner to sure it's on the November twenty-second ballot. And this evening, there's really four discussion items, first, um, overlay concept language. Second is proposed overlay locations, uh, so looking at a map. The third is, uh, uh, any type of proposed exceptions, and fourth would be council consideration, if you'd like to include a sunset date. In the ballot initiative. So, uh, I'll start with, uh, the first one, which is the overlay language. Um, and, and what I plan to do is go through all four of these items, and that, then at the end, we can, uh, if Councilmember Rary, if you're okay with this. That that, that point, we could go to questions from the city council, and I could come back to any of the, um, any of the. The PowerPoint slides for, uh, um. If, if we need additional information, but I'm hoping I can just go ahead and go through this whole.
Okay.
Presentation, great.
Sounds good.
So staff, staff drafted proposed overlay conceptual language that would be applied to certain parcels in the city. With the goal of ensuring continued open space, park, and recreational uses. Staff seeks, uh, confirmation on the overlay concept language and direction regarding where the overlay would be, um, applied. So, I, I won't read this word for word, uh, but as you can see, this is the language that we're proposing, uh, to be included in, in a, uh, an initiative. There's two important features of the proposed open space, uh, overlay, and, and there is follows. Uh, first, the overlay would not change the underlying general plan or zoning designations. For example, uh, semi-public facilities would remain, uh, semi-public facilities. The overlay would place additional restrictions on any SPF parcel subject to the overlay, so SPA, SPF meaning semi-public facilities. These restrictions may only be changed or removed by a vote of the people of Brentwood if the initiative was successful. So while the SPF general plan designation allows for a range of privately owned uses such as daycares and private schools. The overlay would limit that range to recreational facilities. A second, uh, the permanent, um, uh, the, the permanent open space overlay, or sorry. Second, the open space overlay would not expand the use, uses permitted by underlying land use designations. Uh, for example, staff recommends that the overlay be placed on lands currently designated permanent open space. In the general plan, that designation allows very limited uses such as grazing and habitat preservation. The overlay would not upzone these parcels to per- to permit more intensive uses. That are currently allowed under the permanent open space general plan designation. So the, uh, the second item is, uh, overlay location. So there are three different general plan designations that we're proposing that the overlay, uh, would, uh, touch. So first is, uh, permanent or, uh, semi, a public, uh, facility and, and, and specifically large parcels. That are developed for recreational uses, so the SPF designation applies to areas reserved for privately owned uses that serve the community. These uses include religious assemblies, uh, uh, golf courses and other privately owned recreational facilities. Private schools and daycare center, staff proposes applying the overlay to some or all of the large SPF areas. That currently provide valuable community, open space and recreational opportunities, uh, such as, uh, the three golf courses. A second is parks, us, and we'll, we'll be looking for some specific direction on this. Whether the overlay should also apply to publicly owned parks. A staff considers public parks to be at a reduced risk of development. Uh, both because they are publicly owned and because several state laws, such as the Municipal Park Abandonment Act. Restrict the conversion of park land to other lu- other uses. In addition, applying the overlay to public parks could pose operational challenges. And lead to some unintended consequences, for example, the community has benefited in the past from engaging in land swaps. With other public entities to enable the construction of new public facilities, such as the planned fire station. Uh, depending on the initiative's final language, the overlay could prevent the city from facilitating these kinds of projects. That broadly help the community absent a vote of the people. And then finally, a permitted open space, uh, which are already subject to a conservation easement or similar deed restriction. In the unlikely event that a conservation easement was extinguished, this overlay would ensure a vote of the people. Before any more intensive development, uh, could occur. Uh, now, uh, just, uh, these might be a little bit difficult to see, I do have these in a PDF. When we have discussions, we can kind of, uh, draw into these maps, uh, but this is the map of, of SPF. General plan designations of larger, uh. Of larger, uh, um, parcels that are currently being used for some type of recreational use. And very specifically, these are the, the three, uh, golf courses. A second is the permanent open space general plan designation, so this is all of the land currently. Um, with the general plan designation, a permanent open space. Uh, again, these are already subject to some type of, uh, conservation easement or similar deed restriction. And you can kind of see on the west side of town, we have some, and then also very, uh, on, on the top north. Uh, there is some conservation easements also, uh, along the north border of, of the city. Again, I know that's very difficult to see, uh, but I do have a PDF that we can go in and, and we can look at ea- each one of those, uh, specifically. And then finally, parks, uh, we separated the parks into, uh, so these are all the parks. Uh, the darker green, or maybe the, I don't know if we call that an aqua green. Uh, but the darker color represents parks that are ten acres and above, and the lighter green are parks that are less than ten acres. So, uh, the third item to discuss this eve- this evening are proposed exceptions. So the overlay would also include exceptions for public facilities, roads and infrastructure, uh, such as public water. Wastewater, storm drain and water recycling. By calling them out expressly as exceptions, the initiative would clarify that the voter approval is not required to. Um, for example, reroute a sewer line, sewer line within a parcel subject to the overlay. Or extend a roadway or other right of way need, uh, the council may wish to provide additional direction regarding any of these exceptions. Um, also, the, many of, of this first bullet item are things that would already be allowed under the current general plan designation. So, for roadways, public water, wastewater, storm drain, uh, water, uh, recycling. Uh, the second would be an exception for public facilities, for example, uh, for a, a future police station or substation. Or some other type of public use like a fire station or school district where we have a swapped, uh, land. And then finally, we would, uh, propose an exception to ensure that the overlay would be tailored. To avoid parcels where housing is an allowable use, in order to avoid the need to concurrently upzone other parcels pursuant. To the Housing Crisis, Crisis Act of twenty nineteen, which is also known as SB three thirty. And then finally, uh, would be, uh, uh, voter initiatives often propose a twenty to forty year sunset. Uh, beyond which the council may amend the overlay unless it, um. Where, where the council could then, uh, amend overlay unless it's extended by the voters. Uh, this twenty to forty year potential sunset da- date that many communities use. Is beyond normally the typical planning horizon for a general plan. Uh, whether to include a sunset date is a policy discussion for the city council, and the council could have no sunset date, so it is not required. And then finally, uh, just briefly going over some of our, uh, s- staff recommendations, first, uh, we've provided draft overlay language. Uh, second, we've proposed some overlay locations, so, uh, the SPF general plan designation for, uh, large. Properties that, uh, provide valuable community, open space and recreational opportunities. A second, uh, recommendation from staff would be for the parks of ten or more acres, but the council can include all parks if desired. And then third, uh, under the proposed overlocation, over, overlay locations would be including all permanent open space. Uh, general plan designation, uh, properties. The next item is exceptions for public facilities and, and infrastructure. And, uh, carve out for SB three thirty. The staff does not have a recommendation as relates to a sunset dates. And, uh, and then finally, next steps, our goal is to have a robust discussion this evening. With the city council, and then our goal would be to come back to the city council on July twenty-sixth. With a packet hopefully ready for full adoption, which then if the city council wanted any, had any additional last minute changes. Uh, that would give us one additional council meeting to, uh, a regularly scheduled council meeting to discuss that on, on August ninth. Uh, and as long as we, we're adopted by August ninth, uh, we can get that to the county in time to meet. Uh, the November twenty, uh, twenty-two ballot, uh, requirements of getting the information over to the county. So, uh, that's my presentation. Um, I'll go back to. The items, the discussion items that, so we're hoping to discuss this evening, and, uh, myself, Katie. And, uh, Catherine are here and can answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, if you have clarifying questions of staff, please raise your hand, I'll call on you in order for staff to respond, Councilmember Mendoza.
I just have one question, um, Grant Street has all that green space, that's, I think, East Bay Mud. Right? You know, where all that grass is that we take care of, belong, but belongs to them, am I correct on that? Yeah, so, why is that open space not part of this? In the overlay?
So if. If you don't mind, Councilmember, I'm gonna look up to see what the general plan designation is of those properties.
Okay, no problem, thank you. That was it, that's my only question.
You said it's on Grant Street?
Yeah, all, all down Grant Street is that green strip. And we maintain it. But it's not ours. Very nice little green strip.
So everything that we provided tonight is based upon some existing general plan designations. And so, as soon as I find that, I'll, I'll find out and let you know what the general plan designation is, and.
Okay.
Go from there.
It's listed as an aqueduct.
That's a first for me.
So this is part of the McCallbee, uh, cr- coast trail also, is that correct?
Yes.
And it's based upon, this is the map that I'm looking at right now, we, we will go back and look at it. Uh, it looks like there's not a specific general plan designation on the property, but, uh. We'll continue looking as, as, I'm sure there'll be more questions this evening, and, uh. But we'll continue looking, I don't know, Katie, if, if you have an idea of what the general plan designation is on there?
Good evening, council, yes, I'm, I'm looking at the same map, and, um, it does just identify it as aqueduct. I would imagine that it's public facility if it's designated in any particular fashion. Um, but it's something we should clarify with our GIS folks so that we have that designation correctly when you do adopt a final map for this. So we've made the note to check into it, thank you for the question.
Then that could be added as a different, like a color, like aqua, aqueduct or whatever, and be included?
So, aqueduct isn't a general plan land use designation, so we just need to figure out how it's being shown here and what it's officially designated as. But we've made the note and we'll bring the information back, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Meyer.
I have a lot, and I'm trying to figure out the priorities and, and, and what happens with public comments and such, so, um, I'm just gonna start with a couple, but. Um, the decision about ten acres. Um, and I'm looking at one of the, the part of the, um, staff report that said. Applying the overlay to a large number of small parks will make it difficult to administer in the future, um, can you explain why that is? Is it a numbers game, or?
Catherine, would you like to?
Yeah, I'll, I can, um, address that and then perhaps, um, if you want to jump in. Um, my understanding from staff is, is it is primarily a numbers game, um, just in terms of administering. Um, and just tracking, uh, the overlay, uh, on all of the parks. And so while ten acres is, you know, somewhat arbitrary, it was intended at getting at, um, you know, a larger sized park. Um, that was sort of on par with the size of the golf course parcels as well, which are designated SPF.
And I'm part of the, the concern is for the idea of development on these parcels, and, and I'm not sure. What could be developed on a parcel that's under ten acres, that, is it?
Eight house, eight houses can easily go on an acre.
So, can, I mean. If that's the case, if we are at risk of getting eight houses on ten acres, that's a pretty sizable development, so.
No, that was one acre.
No, no, I'm talking about like eight times. Yeah, thank you though, um. So I, I, I am concerned about that, but. I, I don't, I mean, that maybe that's more for the discussion part of it afterwards, but my first question was, what were the implications of, of including the? I mean, maybe that number's too high, maybe we go to a smaller acreage, um, for that designation. Um, also, what happens if, uh, the golf courses were to go bankrupt? Um, what happens to that land, is it, is it just forever, like if, if the? For example, the golf course of Deer Ridge and Shadow Lakes, if the owners, the current owners came up with an idea that was. Approved, if you will, by local residents, how then would that be incorporated into the planning for that area?
So, so specifically to the golf courses, uh, they, if they went bankrupt or they sold or changed hands. They would be required to follow, uh, this, uh, overlay requirement. So, and if they wanted to make any type of change to that, it would require a vote of the residents.
So making it, um, an open space just for walking, like has been discussed, just it paths and such. Wouldn't be a change.
Uh, can also add to that, correct, um, that would be allowed under the overlay. Um, it could also change from a golf course to a different type of recreational use. Uh, a- as allowed under the general plan designation and the overlay as well.
Okay, so, I, I know that there's some concern around that, when it's a, when it would be a citywide vote for a very specific. Neighborhood, but the fact is, we also want to give people the chance to vote on it even within the neighborhood, and that would be a way that that could happen. The, the level of protection for safe harbors for laws already in existence from state legislation. Can you talk about that a little bit, about if, if there is a degree of a safe harbor protection that we would be getting through this?
Um, is this in reference to SB ten, perhaps, um?
Uh, no, I mean, it's more, it's more like thinking about, for example, what Martinez has done. Um, or what Napa did before the laws have changed, you know, it. Yeah, like the safe harbor part of that, once legislation changes, if this is in place before the legislation changes. Level of protection would we actually have, I know, and I know it is not, if state can come in and do whatever they're going to do. I believe there's a, a certain level of protection, and I'm looking for clarification on that.
Sure, and I'm gonna ask this question in two parts, because, and I think as we discussed in, in previous council meetings. Um, the primary benefit, if you will, of, um. You know, adopting an overlay or locking in general plan designations, um, is to, is to prevent, um. Future city councils from changing those, um, so that's the, the primary benefit, um, that, uh, this council and, and the community would get. Um, you know, if, if this measure is approved. Um, as, in terms of safe harbor from future legislation, um, it really depends on what the future legislation is. So I'm gonna go back to SB three thirty, um, as an example, which was discussed in the staff report, and we've talked about it in respect to Martinez. Um, and, and Antioch's measures. Um, SB three thirty only affected new local laws, um, that were enacted after January first, twenty eighteen. So anything before that was, um, grandfathered, if you will, uh, from those changes. So, if there were, if legislation were, were to, um, you know, enact future legislation, um. Generally, it's forward-looking, so it would. So if there were, if legislation were to um, you know, enact future legislation, um, generally it's forward looking, so it would most likely, um, you know, impact only laws that, you know, local laws that were enacted after, after that date. Now, I will say you can't predict the legislation is gonna do and sometimes it does try to reach back and, you know, metal, um, if you in in, you know, local, local government. Um, so it's certainly not a um, a perfect uh, perfect means of protection by any means. Um, but that is, you know, one example to the, the legislative acting prospectively than anything that the council does. Um, currently now, um, it would, would, um, you know, potentially get some protection.
Okay, if I can add, since you mentioned Martinez. Uh, Martinez, uh, since SV three thirty was passed after the Martinez measure was approved, they did not have to deal with it. However, the city of Antioch, um, they did have to deal with it because the measure was enacted. Um, and the date of that January first of twenty eighteen. Uh, their measure was adopted after January first of twenty eighteen, so they had to deal with SV three thirty requirements and it was the reason it was struck down.
And thank you, that's actually, both of you are are giving me the clarification I was looking for. And it, and in part it's to help the public understand why, why this is something that we're considering so significant and important. Because it does, it does offer a measure of support historically. Um, obviously no guarantees, but historically it has. So are we seeing any kind of litigation of planning for Martinez? Are we seeing any action in that area? Does it look like things are are going smoothly there? Are you aware of that? I mean, I'm I'm guessing you're following it, but.
I'm sorry, I'm not aware of any um, litigation. I I I'm not sure if anyone else on staff, um, Darren or or Katie had any other um, insight to share.
So I was just gonna say, no specific uh, legislate or specific litigation, however, there is questions about implementation. Um, and as they're going through their general plan uh, update, uh, that there's possibly people that will be litigating how they're uh, implementing that measure.
Katie, did you want to add anything?
Yeah. I was gonna say exactly what Darren did. I'm I'm not sure if litigation is in the offing just yet, but there are certainly um, very vocal concerns about the way in which the city pimp, city councils um, direction as to the general plan update is capturing the spirit of measure I. And so there seems to be some disagreement as to um, what the intention was and how that's now being played out, but there have been no legal challenges.
Okay. Um, I think the rest, I'm just gonna wait for discussion. Thank you.
So I I do have a clarifying question regarding the golf courses. The PDs uh, currently say what can go there, um, whether, and I think like in Deer Ridge, it's, it's a golf course. Um, it can have a um, the the golf center as well as, I think, uh, food and beverages on site and um, in and and I think these are all in conjunction with a golf course. Uh, I think there was tennis courts and possibly uh, swim, a swimming pool. I I don't think that Shadow Lakes has all of those items. I think that they've got an event center, a uh, food and beverage area and uh, the golf pro shop and the golf course. So does that allow for walking in within the area if it's, it's not? Because it's or, because originally I think went back to uh, back to open space, but when it went to the SPA uh, designation, it eliminated the open space.
So a a a couple of things, as you mentioned, all three of the golf courses have different PDs, plan developments, and all three are are distinct and different. Um, as it relates to specific issues to maybe future use, where we have kind of um, proposed projects, I don't know if it'd be appropriate for us at this time to make a determination on what would or would not be allowed on that. Uh, I I do know that we, we don't, I wouldn't say we have an official application, but we do have um, some information that's been submitted by the current owners of the um, uh, Deer Creek um, project. Like I said, I I'm, I'm not comfortable giving like specifically saying, oh yeah, that does or that does not work. I don't know, Katie, if you could add to that.
Yeah, and I appreciate that caveat because I think it's an important one. So we wanna provide as much information as we can, but we do wanna avoid discussing specific um, hypothetical potential projects. What I can say is that the language of the overlay would be framed in such a way so as to allow um, the less impactful outdoor recreational uses and not allow more impactful enumerated uses that might be listed in the individual zoning districts for all the different golf courses. So things like um, golf courses, outdoor tennis, you know, um, passive parks and walking trails, those types of um, recreational amenities, but not things that might also be listed as potentially being conditionally permitted within those zones, such as a daycare or whatever else. Catherine, I don't know if you have any further clarification to add on that score?
Uh, no, I can provide clarification.
Okay.
And if a application is submitted but not complete by the time it goes to election, are they, and and let's say the voters approve it, um, do they still get to finish their application? Or does it stop because it wasn't completed when the voters passed?
I'll, I'll take that answering that. So the generalist land initiative has exceptions for vested rights. If someone has a vested right, um, they can proceed, um, you know, per the date that they're, I mean, generally it's the case when their application is complete, so um, you know, I I guess I I would, I would wanna look at the facts of some of the specific, you know, instance to determine whether there was a vested right or not, but as a general rule, um, vested rights are exempt. Projects without vested rights are not.
Okay. All right, uh, Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you. This is kind of in in follow-up to golf cursing again is, is the fact that it's uh, their private property that is not accessible by the, or to the public. How does that factor into all of these discussions? Like at this point, the the general public is not supposed to be walking the trails of the golf courses, for example. So would the general public have the vote for something that is privately owned? I'm not sure if I'm explaining my question well, but I'm I'm just looking for clarification on the private versus public access on this.
So I'll jump in here and just say that for our semi-public facilities, they are generally privately owned facilities that make themselves available to some or all members of the public for things like a round of golf, for example. Um, so yes, we would with this initiative be putting in place a structure whereby the electorate would be weighing in on the use of those private properties. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Then Councilmember Meyer, just to add, since, since we're required to work under our existing general plan designation language uh, in order to get to the November twenty twenty-two ballot, uh, w- we're not really able to get into like changing, possibly in including language, otherwise it would require um, additional sequo analysis.
I think that's a really good point. Thank you for bringing that up.
So those are all things that can be discussed if the council wants to go, go that direction, but it would require additional time.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Of staff? Seeing no other questions of staff, um, I will now open up public comment.
I'll go ahead and share the timer screen. I do have one hand raised. I'll call on Rod. Rod, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry. I guess I should read my. I have um, two written public comments that were received on this item. A summary shown on the screen. Full copies of these comments have been made available on the city council webpage at the site listed on the slide. If you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature. I'll call your name if provided and unmute you to speak. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. And now I'll go ahead and call on Rod. Rod, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Margaret. Um, first of all, I wanna thank the city for uh, taking this on. Um, and for assembling a great legal team. I have a lot of confidence that this thing will um, be uh, better, stronger uh, in many ways than than what we originally proposed to the city. Um, I, one quick comment, I would like to see all of the parks under the overlay. Um, there, there is some discussion here tonight about what's allowed and what's not allowed. And just to be, to be clear, and when we're, when we say allowed, we mean what requires a vote and what doesn't. Everything is allowed. It's just who makes the decision. Right? So when we say not allowed, we really mean requires a vote. It's the the voter protected open space. Um, I I'd like to know about how this bill can, because I'm not seeing language here about how the bill can, can cover future um, changes and conditions. So the city might annex a property and and put a park in it or the the legal environment could change, hopefully. Um, and we're gonna do everything we can, uh, the, the the, our neighborhood voices will pass next year and all of a sudden SV three thirty isn't a consideration anymore. Will this be stronger? Will we be prepared with this bill to to be in an environment where there's no SV three thirty anymore? So for instance, where SV three thirty might apply, could we add language to um, place additional properties under the overlay or could we say these, these properties are under the overlay but with severability? So to say that if the state, this is what measure I said basically, is if the state law says something different, you go with the state law, but then when the state law goes away, you don't go with the state law. And at the same time, just because something is in there that's not consistent with state law, that should be severable from the rest of the documents so that that wouldn't apply at that time, but in the future it might. Um, also for for properties like public schools, uh, these things are owned by the school districts and they can kinda do what they want. What I, what I would like to see though is if that school gets sold for any reason, my sister used to live in a, in a converted school that was an apartment in Northampton. If the school gets sold um, for private development, what happens to the football field? Do they put in an apartment building on it? How can we stop that? Can we say that the um, the land that the school is on would fall under the overlay if the school no longer owns it or falls under the overlay, but the school has the right to do what they want because the state gives them the right. But the city would not confer that right if it was the city's choice. So I I wanna, I wanna make sure all of those things are, are thought about, not just the the current environment, but the future environment that we might see. Whether properties are sold, whether they're annexed, whether the state law changes. Um, that's something that I'm very concerned with. Uh, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. I see no additional hands raised. Oh, I do have an additional hand raised. I'll go ahead and call on Wayne Francis. Mr. Francis, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, a very brief uh, statement. Um, I would like to see, well, first of all, um, I support this plan um, and commend everybody who's been involved in uh, bringing it to fruition. As a resident of uh, Deer Ridge, uh, this has been a major concern for a number of years. And uh, the only statement I'd like to make is that um, I would like to see a sunset period uh, established on this, preferably forty years. Uh, you're talking about anywhere from twenty to forty years. I think it needs to have teeth uh, to protect the uh, residents and the, the owners of the um, surrounding properties. Um, that's all I have to say at this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Antonio Xavier. Mr. Xavier, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to do a quick comment on one of the emails I read. Um, there seems to be a lot of confusion from the residents about what this covers and what it's gonna force to happen. Uh, the email from Mr. Booth was concerned about the golf course being run in perpetuity and the city being forced to operate that. Um, I know we're not in the community feedback portion yet, but when we get to that point, maybe some FAQs to address. Um, my understanding from this project is no, that would not happen. There would be no forced golf course operation in perpetuity. That is not what this initiative is, is directed to. And I think that might clear up some of the confusion in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional hands raised.
All right, uh, since there's no other speakers, uh, I will close public comment. Is there any council discussion? Councilmember Mendoza.
Um, Darren, do you mind putting up the questions we have to answer real quick and then I I'll just go through it on those?
Totally.
Overlay concept, um, I want all of the maps. I know you have it separated, all of them together, the big one, the big shebang one. Is that what your question was? Were you asking about the overlay language?
Yeah, one second, let me
Okay.
pull this up and then I'll.
Sorry, I caught you off guard.
No, no, you're all good. So first of all, I apologize. I said Deer Creek instead of Deer Ridge also.
Can you put your, um, present?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, and then did you want the map?
No, it's, I have it up here. So I'm looking at the one that is um, titled Draft Open Space Initiative Options. And it includes the parks less than ten, parks greater than ten, permanent open space, semi-public.
Yes.
Well, when you're asking this overlay concept language, are you asking which map we want or?
So, so the first one is the language and that was the the language that lands designated as both voter protected open space. Here, let me go to it. This is the language. If you're okay with the items that are included in this, right? So this is the uses that the overlay would allow.
And you're taking care of the future, so any new parks that come up in new development?
Which so, so I'll let Catherine and Katie uh, talk about how new parcels would or would not be included or, or or what that process is, because that's a great question.
Um, yeah, that was a, that's a great question. Um, so the the map would be included in the ballot measure itself, um, as directed by council. Uh, and all the parcels that are included in the map would be covered by the overlay. Um, to a extent, the council wants to add additional parcels to the overlay, you know, five, ten years from now. Um, it may do so, but it wouldn't actually have the the protection or the teeth of of that voter approval. So a future council could just, you know, five, fifteen years from now, well, actually, I don't really want those parcels in the overlay after all, and can take them out unless they're locked in by a vote of the people. So um, you know, I've seen this happen, for for example, with urban growth boundary initiatives. Um, maybe there's some desire to to tweak the boundaries a little bit. It's in fact for ten, fifteen years and then it goes um, it sunsets or is about to sunset or or the council just wants to, the voters wanted to change the um, uh, tweak the lines a little bit. It can go back to the voters uh, for for re-adoption, um, and that locks in the protections. Um, so there was, you know, some discussion of, well, could you, could we add parks that might be there in the future? I'm not in any way that would actually have the teeth of taking those new parcels back to the voters.
Okay, so if we have a new development coming up, that's not included. Unless it's designated here.
Unless it has a current general plan designation of parks, that is correct.
So if voters love this and they think this is like the best thing since sliced bread, they could like every five years, they could say, we have this whole new inventory of parks, we want to add it and get it protected, but that would be up to them. Like if they want, like they could come like they did this time and figure that out.
Yes, if I, yes, and having a NAPA a few years back, um, voters love, measure J has been overwhelmingly successful. Um, but it was about to sunset and so the voters, um, you know, re-adopted it pretty overwhelmingly uh, with additional lands and and extended sunset date.
Okay. Katie, and if I could jump in, yeah, and just say that that is one of the reasons that you may wish to consider a sunset date is to give this a lifespan and, you know, have voters have the opportunity to come back and assess new development that has occurred since it was first approved. So it 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 may be one thing to consider.
Okay, so um, I guess, so if I were to answer the questions, I don't, we can go through it like that. The number one is the overlay with everything in it. Proposed overlay locations, I I would like perks under ten acres and the one that pops to my, well, first of all, if I look at our general plan policy CSF two dash two, it's achieve and maintain a minimum overall citywide ratio of five acres per part, you know, per one thousand residents. If we start excluding parks and smaller parks get taken away, we're never gonna meet our general plan goal. Like we'll, we'll fall behind and that's not, we're known as one of like kid-friendly cities and I would like to keep it that way. And also we know with um, certain, you know, if something were to happen and someone were to take it over, yes, you know, Councilmember Ray is correct, it's eight houses per acre. However, with SV nine, they now can do the ADU and the junior ADU. the ADU and the junior ADU and subdivide it to twelve hundred square feet. So our old zoning, like, it exists, but it's not it's not as strong as it used to be. And on top of that, now they want to do two-story ADUs. So I would like it everything when it comes to the parks and and also because I think that while the fire station was a really good thing, you never know what council is going to be in place and what their priorities are. It might not be a fire station. It might be something else. So I I would like all perks. I don't, I, the reason I don't want the exceptions is because there's also discussion at the state level that schools can start building homes on their properties. And I think we need to be able to account for the homes that are coming in, understand what, to the best of our ability, given the state, what we have coming in and make sure that we have the infrastructure necessary. So I would also like to include the schools. You know, I mean, just include it all and and that keeps us as tight as possible to the current zoning we have, in my opinion. And sunset, you know, in forty years, it's going to be a totally different ballgame. I don't see forty years, but I'm fine with forty years. I'll be ninety and all the whippersnappers can decide if they want to keep doing this like they did in Napa. So forty years would be fine. And, you know, hopefully people start discussing it way before then.
So Councilmember Mendoza, Katie and I are both keeping notes, and we're going to put this up at the end of the of the discussion, just to make sure. As relates to the concept language, you're okay with it. As relates to the overlay location, you want to include all and include schools?
Yeah, schools, and I can't remember what else you had listed, but all of it. And especially the fire department, because we sold land to a fire department. I don't, I mean, and I know there's contracts and such. But let's make sure it's either a fire department and admin, like, let's just if they give it back to us, it'd be great to give those people back their park. You know.
And then sunset at forty years and then no exceptions other than what's already allowed in the general plan as relates to infrastructure for water, sewer, roads, those type of items?
Yes. And and Grant Street, we're going to research Grant Street, see if we need that. Do the exceptions come to planning or to council, or were the exceptions just go to staff to make decisions?
So in the ballot initiative language, we would include language that specifically defines what type of exceptions or carve outs would be allowed. And then can I, to follow up, I, we also talked about an exception for SB three thirty to ensure that we're not in conflict with that. Are you okay with that?
Yes, we do not want to break any laws and have HCD Bonta coming after me.
I see Katie came up.
And if I could ask for some clarification. So with regard to the commentary on schools in particular, state law provides that school boards can override our local zoning and land use regulations by a four-fifth vote of the board. So
Private schools.
And they already have.
Yeah, but not private schools. So do we want to say private schools?
Well, so the the areas that we're looking at with the, so we don't have any private schools in parks. We don't have any private schools in permanent open space. And in the semi-public facility areas, the only areas that we're looking at there are the golf courses. So we wouldn't have them in any of those three areas. Does that give you some level of comfort?
Yeah, if you believe it's not a risk, then, okay, I will trust you on that. If it's not a risk, you don't see it in the maps. That's good.
We've we've written it down and we'll follow up on it before we bring this back to you. But I I don't think as a technical matter, it's an area that has the same level of risk as the others that we've discussed tonight. Thank you.
Is that it? Okay, Councilmember Meyer.
I'm not a lot to say because I I she said a lot of what I was thinking, so thank you for that. I definitely would do the carve out for SB three thirty. I don't want us to get into trouble. I wish there was a way to exclude the tiny little pocket park that nobody could build even a treehouse in, but for the sake of, I mean, that's not going to be an issue for here anyway. So I think, yeah, absolutely, under the ten acres, and I'm sorry to to add to the extra potential work, but hopefully that won't even be an issue. I do think we need to protect those as well. So I would agree with that, agree with the sunset date, agree with the language. There was a, there was a discussion at one point about the carve out for public facilities. I'm not I don't recall what that was for. You have clarification?
Yes, so were you asking, Councilmember Meyer, I can answer that question.
Yeah.
So if you, the city council can include language that would allow a carve out, which would allow swapping or selling of land for some type of public facilities, public facility, and I'll use an example. Let's let's assume downtown or here at Civics, here at at City Hall at our park, if for some reason, the police department wanted to build a new substation. And maybe right here is not a good location, but somewhere on on the north side of town. That would not be allowed in a park unless there was a vote of residents to allow that. So
And we're also, we're talking about like the Bristow Theater situation. This is not
Yes, absolutely. Bristow Theater is a great example.
But if we included the exception for those, then they could?
Yes. If if you don't include an exception, those would not be allowed, oh, sorry, it would be allowed by a vote of the residents of Brentwood. So that's the only way it could occur, would be to put it on a ballot.
And Suzanne, Councilmember Meyer, the one that comes to mind to me is City Hall downtown.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I would have voted on that. I would not have voted for that there.
I think you, a lot of people agree with you on that one. Okay. I definitely want the carve out for SB three thirty, of course, but I don't, I I'm looking at my notes and I don't see anything else that I would want to include in the language. I believe I'm okay with the way these things are. Thanks.
Quick clarification, council member. You indicated that you would consider a sunset date, but you didn't say what duration. Did you have a particular
Oh, sorry, I'm fine with forty years as well.
Thank you.
So I'm okay with the overlay concept language. The proposed overlay location, I I do want all parks included. You know, neighborhood parks were supposed to be about five acres. They're now somewhere between three and five acres. I think some of, there's even a couple out there that are two and a half acres that are considered a neighborhood park. And then the pocket parks are under that amount. And so I I would like to see all of them because we are, we we're already behind on the amount of parks we need to build for, you know, five acres per thousand population. Proposed exceptions, public infrastructure, public facilities, police station or substation and other facilities, public schools and fire. And so I I want to make sure that it says public school. As we said, they can do it anyway, and they can, they can do it anyway, fire. We currently have a fire station planned for Empire. We've got the downtown that's building that will be built, and then, of course, it's Station Fifty Two. But currently, there is a little part designated at Shady Willow, or not Shady Willow, at Sand Creek and by Mary Casey Black. The was at one time thought to be a place for the fire station, but it's not necessarily where the fire district wants it. I don't know that I want to swap out a park place, but you know, if if we can swap out that park place for another park place, that that's a possibility. And sunset day, I I'm leaning towards twenty years only because if something gets annexed in or or if the urban limit line changes for some reason, do you do we know when the the urban limit line sunsets? I I think they passed it. I forget when.
I want to say it's twenty twenty six, but we can verify that.
So yeah, if the urban limit line doesn't get revoted in and and but and they can and developers can build outside of what was our urban limit line because they no longer need voter approval. I I don't want to wait forty years to change that. I mean, I I want to be able to designate something.
But but sorry for breaking in, could the residents at that point, though, bring it back up? Bring it back in for a vote to do that?
Yes.
An offer of suggestion, yeah. So even if the sunset is forty years, the residents could, you know, in ten years, do a new overlay initiative to designate additional parcels. Correct.
But they also need to get all the signatures, correct, to do that?
I, yes, it was a voter sponsored measure. They would need to get all the signatures. Alternatively, the, you know, council in ten years could also you know, do another initiative to identify additional lands for the overlay.
Okay, so I just, you know, don't want to confuse voters who who think, well, we already have that in place. Why why do I need to sign up for another one? It's already in place. And so they
We have to educate them that anything incremental, they're going to have to add it in. So whether it's by this sun setting and then either the council or them doing an initiative or them just adding the incremental portion. They're going to have to do it. They're, you know, one or the other.
So so I'll go with the forty years then.
So you, I can't get clear, so you you're okay with the police being an exception and the fire being an exception? They can build
And the schools you mentioned, right?
Well, schools, well, I mean, obviously, I I just wanted to specify only public schools, not not private school.
I'm not keen on exceptions for school for fire and police. I mean, they already took, a fire already took five acres. So I think if we're going to take any more park space from residents, they should get a say. That was a lot of land we gave them. So we're, I mean, I don't know, I just feel like we already did them wrong on a few things, and I don't, I want them to have a say.
So you're concerned that future council?
Yeah, not us. I'm not worried about it. I think we're copacetic, but
Well, what happens is, let's say, we have let's say over there at what's the park that's going to be over there off of Village Drive? Is it Windsor Way Park? Listen, we do the the building out there. And and then a police substation goes in there. I don't know that the zoning or the general plan or the currently allows for a police substation to go into that building. So then we would have to make a general plan amendment to allow for a police substation to go in there.
That already allows for a building, right? Like we, that's already been in the plans. So with staff, they are city staff. Right?
I think we need to ask legal about that.
So if you, I mean, I would be fine if you don't want to include that, you want to make language for that specific park, that would be fine.
Um, I was going to say Karen, sorry, Councilmember Murray, are there other areas of concern on this one?
We could, okay. Can we carve out just that one in the initiative, Katie and Catherine?
So I will say that carving out a single one sort of gets us into interesting questions of potential spot zoning and and other legal theories that we would want to look into. We might be able to talk about some language that would limit the opportunity to exercise this exception. And Catherine and I can discuss that offline and and bring that back to you for further discussion in July. And what I'm thinking is, you know, we might have some maximum acreage where that type of exception could be employed, such that, you know, it could be no more than two acres, three acres, five acres, whatever. But still give the city and other public agencies some small amount of flexibility, because if you do go with a forty year sunset date, you know, Brentwood's changed a lot in the last four decades, right? And it's going to change a lot more in the next four decades. So is there any flexibility the council wants to consider to accommodate some of that potential change that's coming in future years that we might not be able to anticipate right now? So if if you would be so gracious as to let us look into that, we'll bring you more information.
That that would be good.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, that's that works.
And I think that's it. I think that's the only point we didn't agree on, right, Councilmember Murray?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So do we have any other questions or comments for staff or for regarding it at all?
No.
Okay.
Was there any other, I don't believe there was any other question from the public comments that didn't get answered, right? I think you've you've been really good on on top of that. I don't think there was anything else, right?
I, Councilmember Mendoza?
No, I was going to make a motion when you're ready.
Okay.
No, I I think I think you answered everything that Rod and and, you know, Wayne and I can't
Antonio.
Antonio.
We're going to find out for the person who sent the email about bankruptcy. I think we're going to address his concerns and see what happens there.
It is private property, so
Yeah.
All right, so I will now
Katie was going to say something.
Forgive me. So we have been taking notes while you've all been talking. And Councilmember Mendoza, if you don't mind, I'll put those notes up and you can tell me if we've captured everything correctly, and if we haven't, maybe it'd be so good as to correct us going forward. Is that agreeable?
Yeah, that's awesome.
The council? Give me one second here. All right, can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay, so the overlay language, you didn't make any changes to what was provided in the staff report for your consideration. Is that correct?
Correct.
The proposed exceptions, we have existing exceptions as set out in the staff report for things like public facilities, roads, infrastructure that would accommodate water, wastewater, storm drain. You all seem to be okay with that. I heard three yeses as to including an exception for any development that might be required to be accommodated under SB three thirty. And then you'd like us to look into information on additional public facilities, whether there might be some way to frame that to limit any impact, but still give the city some flexibility to provide for future community needs as the community changes. Is that correct?
Yes.
So we will bring that back. Okay. With regard to the overlay location, this would go over the large semi-public facility areas that are currently developed with recreational uses and or community open space, i.e. what is shown on the maps attached to your packet today. For parks, you want all sizes of parks included, not just those that are ten acres or larger. And to be very clear, we're talking here about parks that have a general plan land use designation of park. Right? Because we do have some areas of the city that have parks that are part of residential developments that don't have a general plan designation. All permanent open space areas as shown in the general plan. And then you'd like us to investigate the general plan land use designation for that linear park on Grant Street to see if that might also be included. Is that correct?
For me, yeah.
Okay, and I'm seeing nodding heads from the other two. And then a sunset date of forty years. Are we missing anything or have we mischaracterized anything?
I do not believe so.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Well, thank you. So I would like to make a motion to approve the direction provided to staff per the notes that Katie showed us.
Second.
Council roll call.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Mary?
I.
Motion carries with Vice Mayor Rodriguez and Mayor Bryant absent.
Thank you very much, council members.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So on to agenda item D dot four, resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute the Third Amendment to the January twenty eight, twenty twenty amended appointment agreement Amended employment agreement with the city of Brown and the city manager, Tim Ogden. Um, I do have a question before we move into this, um, does this need four votes?
No, it does not.
Okay.
Three votes is fine.
Okay, so item D four pertains to that amendment. And uh, the city manager's employment agreement, the human resources director, Sukari Basheers, will present it.
Good evening, and do a just quick mic check, everybody can hear me, correct? All right, cool, all right, so good evening, council chair Rary and councilmember Meyer. As well as councilmember Mendoza. The item um before you tonight for consideration is the third amendment to the city manager's contract. This is coming before you today specifically because we have three point two five percent salary increases coming. Effective July one, and if this contract is not amended, then the city manager's current contract would allow. For an additional increase to his salary because his salary has to be five percent above the highest paid department director. So what this amendment does is removes that particular provision from the um from the contract. So I will pause there to see if there are any questions.
You have a clarifying question for staff? No, okay. So if there are, since there are no questions from the council, I will now open for public comment.
I received no written public comments on this item. If you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature, I'll call your name if provided and I'm you to speak. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. And I'm seeing no hands raised.
All right, since there are no speakers, I will close public comment, is there any council discussion?
Nope.
Nope, seeing none, um, I'll now take a motion on the resolution.
As detailed in the staff report, adopt a resolution approving the third amendment to the city manager's employment agreement.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
I.
Motion carries with Vice Mayor Rodriguez and Mayor Bryant absent.
Right, agenda E, request for a future agenda items, if you have a new agenda request, make consideration. Of our recently approved strategic plan, please raise your hand and I will call on you in order. Uh, we have Susanna, um, uh, Councilmember Meyer.
This is a future agenda item based on conversations um that I've had with Bruce Mulder. And with um the chief about youth services um that the city provides, that the school provides. That are available to the region um that nonprofits are providing and and trying to identify some of what these gaps are. And so what I would like to do is is discuss creating an ad hoc committee. Specific to working all of that out, um, potentially including um member of the public. Uh, someone from the youth commission, someone from council, someone from the PD and staff, uh, potentially nonprofit. I it partially is in response to um the the discussions about the youth center. Because I feel if we start having these discussions now, if we do move forward in trying to apply for Measure X funds. That we're in a stronger place because we're showing that we're being proactive and and learning ahead of time what is needed in the area. Um, and also in part because of the mental health issues that we're seeing in our youth. Um, and the fact that we need to just be a little bit more proactive in trying to make sure that um that needs are being met and that we can offer the resources that our our youth need. So I would like to um discuss the idea of having an ad hoc committee. And I think I think I've covered everything I need to, everyone's got that clear?
I'm confused when we ask, what exactly are you asking for?
An ad hoc committee.
But what it what is, what is, what do you want from the ad hoc committee?
I want to find out what exactly is available, and we've got a tentative list started already. But what I want is to have that list actually vetted, uh, not just looking up on a website, but finding out. That, yes, this nonprofit is in fact in uh in existence and it is serving, and here's what they offer as far as updates to youth services. So finding out what the gaps are, um, coming up with some ideas about which nonprofit fills this gap. Which school, which city activity, that kind of thing. And and like I said, in part to see what we can do to to bolster youth services. And in part to potentially be in a better place to apply for Measure X funds.
Okay. So um I also have a a request, um. As far as I know, the city council has uh not had a pay increase since two thousand and twelve. And whether or not it's just doing an annual CPI uh pay increase on it. Or um doing a study, um, I that's something I like to pose to the rest of the council. Um, I won't benefit from it because I won't be here for it, but um uh in time, other council members will. So um, you know, as as some of you know, we. You spend a whole lot more hours on this than you you actually think that you you will when you get onto the council. But anyway, that's that's what I'd like to to uh request as a future agenda item. Um, and any others? All right, so um, the next one is E two requested items. Uh, item E two dot one is a future agenda request from council member from myself and um Councilmember Mendoza. Related to campaign finance limits and reforms. Um, counts, myself and Councilmember Mendoza would like to explain our request. So um, this is a another one that that uh, you know, I brought up to Councilmember Mendoza. Um, regarding limiting uh contributions uh for campaigns. And and I know that other cities do, I I I think um. Walnut Creek, I think they started at a hundred dollars and they also do a CPI adjustment to the nearest five dollars. I think they're like at a hundred and ninety seven dollars, or maybe they're up to two hundred by this time. Um, in the last, I think they started in nineteen ninety four, was that what it said?
I can't remember, uh, the FPPC hasn't paid with all of the.
Yeah, with with all, I and so that's it, is that the FPPC already has a list of of all of the what cities and counties. That have, um, or maybe it's just cities that have.
It does have something for the counties of.
And what their um limits are, so it wouldn't spend, take a lot of staff time to do it since it's already on the FPPC website. Um, we just downloaded and provided and discussed around that. You know, it's, I I I think it makes it easier. For um, you're on an even playing field instead of, you know, having somebody with a twenty thousand dollar donation. Um, you know, from one person that uh, and I know that there's a cap of of shy of five thousand now. But um, still, if we have a limit, then it it's it makes it more on an even playing field for everyone. And I'd also like to look at it that uh contributions can only be received during the campaign year. Because otherwise, um, you can continue to, you know, get one person who would have done that very large donation. Doing a donation for every year that you're on your council, waiting for your next election time. Um, so then instead of the four hundred or five hundred or whatever limit we let said, now they've got sixteen hundred or two thousand. Um, from that one person, so um, Councilmember um Mendoza.
Yeah, I agree with everything you said, I think that um, this has been a topic in the community since, I mean, way before I was elected. We don't understand why in a small town of Brentwood, you know, you would need that much money, you know, to run a campaign. Um, yeah, I did some, not, my husband did a novelty item that was very expensive, but you only do that once. But you should be able to run with smaller donations, um, and I think the even playing field is important. You know, we're we're not in this for the money and um. I would hope that people would look at substance more than like shiny ads and um things like that, you know, so. This way, everyone has like the same kind of money and we'll all probably do the same kind of thing, you know, lawn signs, flyers, door hangers. Like just the basic stuff and then it becomes more about your messaging versus, you know, how much marketing you're doing. And how good you are at the marketing because funds are going to be limited. Um, so yeah, I I'm excited, I, the amount's gonna be interesting, you know, there is a page if anyone wants to see it, the FPPC has one. Where you can go look at ca- campaign contribution limits and there's a lot of cities that have it, so, yeah, I don't know where we start. Um, that's gonna be, I think, where I think a lot of our conversation is gonna be, because I think our community wants this. And I've heard it from a lot of people, so um, I think our our conversation is gonna go there. So I think we should spend staff time and money on it, you know, but I don't know, do we take public comment now or what do we do now on this one? Yeah, public comment.
Yes, it'd be appropriate to take a public comment this time and then council can just discuss after that.
All right, um, so at this time, um, if there's any uh public, anyone who'd like to make a public comment, please raise your hand.
There's one hand raised, I'll go ahead and call on Rod. Rod, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Margaret, yes, um, yeah, I I'm so thrilled to see this city council come forward with this. Uh, I probably um am the one person in the community who has really. Gone out of my way to publicize the fact that um, Mayor Bryant took twenty thousand dollars from Cino. Uh, on two separate occasions in two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty, so for a total of forty thousand dollars. Um, for a job that pays uh twenty, it's basically uh, city council gets like twenty thousand dollars a year, not even. It's it's nine hundred dollars a month, I believe, so uh barely eleven thousand. Um, it makes no sense, it makes no financial sense, um, it's hard to see where that money was even spent. It's hard to see those donations. It was the 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 contributor had a way to make a last minute donation. So it wouldn't even show up on the city website until after the election, so um it was, it was difficult to find that out. It, I don't know if it's corrupt or not, but it it certainly um looks awful to the public that sees that. Uh, when a developer who has business in front of the city can hand. Um, one of the council members who will be making decisions on that application, uh, twenty thousand dollars, it's crazy. Um, so this is an extraordinarily um beneficial uh plan. I would set a limit at two fifty, um, I guess five hundred would be okay. Under the the circumstances that uh as as uh Councilmember Rary mentioned, that it could only be once every election cycle. And not once every year, uh, it it just, it makes sense, I think everybody in in the public can understand this. People see what money does in politics and we just don't need that here. I wish we could do it nationally for every election, but I'm so proud of the city council uh bringing this to Brentwood. Because it's it's something for the whole country to look at and be inspired by, thank you so much.
Thank you, the next speaker is Antonio Xavier, and I'll also mention that we didn't receive any written public comments on this item. Antonio, go ahead.
I can hear you again?
Yes, go ahead.
Just want to chime in and agree, I I'm a hundred percent behind this idea. Um, going back to that transparency theme earlier, as well as trust in our elected officials, I think this is an amazing idea. I also like the additional requirement that it only happened during the election cycles and not off years. So yes, big fan, a hundred percent agree with it, thank you for for bringing it up.
Thank you, I have no additional hands raised.
Okay, with that, we'll close public comment and um councilmembers, if you wish to express comments on the agenda, please raise your hand. I'll call on you in order, um, Councilmember Meyer.
Figure I'm the only one who hasn't spoken yet, so. Um, this is something I heard a lot during my campaign as well, um, and and very much support the idea of, I'm really glad that you both brought this forward. Um, and I hadn't thought about honestly, the contributions only being accepted during the campaign year, but that makes a lot of sense. Um, the even playing field, all about that, I I would one hundred percent support uh staff time and effort. Being put into fleshing this out, I think um, we've heard it from the community uh for a long time, we've seen the pushback in Brentwood. And well beyond, and we are just one small city and and the need for those huge amounts of uh contributions coming in. This doesn't make sense beyond wanting a a, you know, centerfold in the local newspaper. Um, so I I'm all about supporting this, I I absolutely have no concerns or or doubts at all, thanks.
Uh, Councilmember Mendoza?
Yeah, and um, you know, someone had said to me, well, you know, a PAC can come in and do anything, I mean, we just saw Soros spend money that his. The person he put ads for didn't, was not part of the ads, right? So a PAC could come in and pay for one of our candidates to do something. But then it's very clear who the PAC is and who, and we, you can find out who's behind the PAC. So it doesn't mean it's gonna take money out of our politics, but it means that it'll be clearer what comes to you. And your campaign versus someone else might be super interested in getting someone specifically elected. And it's gonna be really, really clear.
So I thought I read in in the um list that you gave us. That uh there was some that for like the PACs that you could put a limit of a thousand dollars on them. I think I read that in one of them, um, you know, and when I mentioned four hundred, five hundred. My son's running for Austin City Council in the state of Texas. And and Austin, you know, has a four hundred dollar limit per person. Uh, eight hundred dollars if you're a couple, so you know, each each couple, each person in the couple can contribute their own four hundred dollars. Because it's still four hundred dollars per person, um, but you could, they could make it in one check, you know, since it's a couple. And they're, both their names are on the check. Um, but, yeah, I mean, if a if a city like that could do it. Um, at such low limits, I I'm not sure why why we couldn't, but um. Did uh, we get a motion?
Uh, yes, I will make, uh, where's my motion? I make a motion for staff to spend time and resources um bringing us back. Is, you know, information or how to implement or actually implement it, I think we just want to get it and vote on it, right?
Yeah, and and second that one.
I have a first and a second, uh, councilmembers regarding coming back, um, spending time staff resource to come back with something. Uh, I I'm envisioning coming back that the council would would want an ordinance to come back. Um, to amend the municipal code provisions related to campaign financial reform that you already have um in place. Uh, I I would also envision having some blank spots in there because I didn't hear some firm consensus on um dollar amounts yet. And you might wanna, you want to see what that might look like. Councilmember Rary, I know you raised the example of your son's campaign in Austin, I note that that is a different state and Texas likely has different rules and California does. Um, so I I'd probably want to stick with California um examples. I know that the city clerk had provided some information about the different cities and as you correctly said, the FPPC has sample ordinances on those on their webpage. So we can certainly look at those to see how we can improve our our code and put these provisions in place. And the two things I heard were were one, uh, a limit on the dollar amounts to some number. And then two, a limit on when the contributions could be made, uh, once per election cycle, not once per calendar year. Um, and and I'll tell you, you know, since I've been in Brentwood, much of our campaign code that we have in place right now. Was adopted in two thousand four, and so I've never had occasion to look at those sections because they've just been there and they haven't been changed. So this is an area that I don't have a lot of experience and I'll probably bring an election attorney on board just to make sure that we. an election attorney onboard just to make sure that we do this, we do this right and we get the, the proper language in there. So that, that's sort of what I would envision staff doing in this instance, but if you had other ideas or missed, or you think you didn't like something I said, please let me know.
I want a $500 limit.
A 500 is fine.
You guys agreeable to that?
And I have a question though. We have an election coming up. Do we want to do an emergency ordinance so that we can have something in place for the next election?
I, I understand that. I'd want to look into that because I'm not sure. I'd want to look into what would qualify as an emergency in this instance versus some of the other items that you've recently brought up where it's very clear that that is the case.
How long would it normally take? I'm sorry, Damian, how long would it normally take for this to be pushed through?
Well, the ordinance would need to be drafted and then brought to you for the first reading. And then, and so that's one meeting and the second meeting would be the second reading. And then it would go into effect 30 days after that. That's the normal election ordinance or the normal ordinance process. So under that process, it's unlikely it would be able to apply for this current election cycle. It would come into effect for the next election cycle.
So that's why it would be an emergency.
So make, can we make two motions for, one to, to check, to see if we could do an urgency motion or on, on this and, or, yeah, an urgency on this. And then the second motion is to move forward on the, the regular schedule?
Yes.
Okay. I'll second. Both of those.
Well, what, maybe, maybe.
They're very excited.
Clearly. Perhaps the, the motion could be that, you know, have staff spend time and resources looking into a two ordinance process, the first, an urgency ordinance to put something in place quickly, and then at the same time, going through the regular ordinance adoption process to put, put the language in through, through the regular process.
Yeah, for a cap of $500 and if possible, a cap on PACs to 1,000.
Again, and these are areas, this is the, the part that I, I do believe we need to do more research on because I'm not sure some of the limitations on what the council can do related to PACs and things of that sort versus individual contributions. From what, from just my brief look at the, look at what I've seen, individual contributions, I think there's more leeway there, at least more cities have those in place. I don't think those have been challenged. I'm not as certain about the PACs. So we need to look at that and that will take some time. But you know, we'll move that as quickly as we can, given the other items that, that staff's working on. Recognizing, you know, that this election cycle will start next month, I believe campaign, the, the campaign filings or the paperwork can be pulled, I want to say July, is it the 14th, Margaret?
July 18th.
July 18th.
Through August 12th.
Okay, so I, I think, you know, once those, once the, once that nomination period's open, I think it's very difficult for, for this to be, you know, go into effect for that cycle. So we're looking at, you know, your most likely your first meeting in July. I don't think that's gonna make the agenda for the, the last meeting in June.
Okay, so the urgency one is the one that would.
That would, that would be the one that we, that would be taken. And ideally, if, if both would go at the same time. So you can get one in place, you know, the urgency one, then the other one is, is going into the same time, if, if that's possible.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I think there's a motion on the floor, Councilmember Rary.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Alright, I think you may have made the motion.
I did. Whatever Damian said.
Oh, I know.
And I agree.
I'll confirm that on my second, if I have that correct.
We're very aligned on this one.
And council roll call vote.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Hi.
Motion carries with Vice Mayor Rodriguez and Mayor Bryant absent.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, roll call vote.
Councilmember Mendoza? Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Yes.
Motion carries with Vice Mayor Rodriguez and Mayor Bryant absent.
Wonderful. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Bye, the three amigos.